Okay, I'm blind, that's okay. The April 17th, 2013 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on Cable, KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers, made possible this month by a donation from Triple George Grill. Please note some customers of Cox Communication and who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast, KCLV, on the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If the alarm should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exit at the back of the chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment items, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward to the city clerk's staff. If you parked in the parking garage across from the chambers and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'm going to ask everyone to rise for our invocation, but in that invocation and prayer, please, all of us, give prayers to those who lost loved ones in the tragedy in Boston, to those young people and older people who are still in emergency in the hospital, and our sincerest condolences, but hopes for a better world in which we live. So please, Steve Sanson from the Veterans in Politics International, and please remain standing for our pledge.
Almighty Father, we bow our heads for those that recently were injured and those that died in Boston. Please help us, as a nation, to rid ourselves of evil. Almighty Father, we stand before you in supplication, asking your divine mercy and protection to envelope with your invincible armor our loved ones and all branches of our military. Give them courage and strength against all enemies, both spiritual and physical, and hasten their safe journey back to their homes and families. Almighty Father, please help those whom have the leadership to put our military service members on top of the list. Please encourage them by helping them understand that our military men and women are your angels of freedom, and without your angels of freedom, this country would perish. Almighty Father, work your way into the hearts and souls of our city council. Guide them to be the ethical public servant. Please grant them with tremendous decision-making values by continuing to put the citizens first before their own agenda. We pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we will proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. As we are pausing over there on our right, I would like him to please turn to the audience, if you would. This is our interim fire chief, Steve Smith, if you would, after you see Councilman Coffin, who is meeting him. A hand to our, of welcome to you, to Steve Smith, interim fire chief. We welcome you here. Thank you, thank you. In honor of this day, we'd like to have the swearing-in for wards 2, 4, and 6 council members. We will have presentations and photographs for each. Sorry. What a great group we've had, and it's just so great to see them all returning. Would Councilman Ross's wife, Kelly, please come forward? And we're so pleased to have you here. She got stuck in traffic, but right on time, we're so delighted. And Councilman Steve Ross, would you please come forward, stand to my right, to be sworn in for City Council Ward 6? And would you raise your right hand, please? Ooh, this is an emotional thing.
It is.
I mean, this is really awesome, it is really emotional. Do you solemnly swear that you will protect and defend the Constitution and the government of the United States, the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and the loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and further that you will not, under any direct or indirect obligation, to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to any office position or employment in the city government of the city of Las Vegas, and further that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office on which you are about to enter, so help you God, and further that your bona fide address is shown herein, and you will immediately notify the city of Las Vegas of any change of address during your term of office?
I do, and I will, Mayor.
Oh, my goodness, it's, oh, this is so unbelievable. I am, thank you, I'm dropping things here, this is so exciting. I am proud to present to you, on behalf of the city, your fellow councilpeople and myself, the mayor, your certificate of election. This is so wonderful and exciting. And I think, aren't you allowed to say something?
Uh, yeah.
Yes, you am. I've never known him to be silent. Okay. I think, you know, I have instructions here, pardon me, but this is family to us. So let me, let me have you say a few words. And Kelly, I know, look at this wonderful Kelly.
The better part of me is my wife, certainly, without a doubt, but thank you, Mayor, thank you, councilmembers. This is a little bittersweet, as this is the last time I will be sworn in as a Las Vegas City Councilman, as I enter into my third term. It has been a privilege to serve the citizens of this city, and certainly the citizens of Ward 6, and I want to extend my appreciation to them for trusting me and allowing me to serve them in my capacity as a City Councilman. Thank you to the residents of Ward 6, and all those wonderful organizations that have continuously endorsed me as a City Councilman in the city of Las Vegas, and also to my beautiful bride, the mother of my children, and to all of my children and to their spouses for supporting me and continuing to knock on doors and get people out to vote. It's been a privilege, Mayor, to serve with you, your husband, the members of the City Council, and those who I've served with in the past. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Now, how about a photograph? Do we want to all step over here to the right, if we could? This is really, I mean, it is an extraordinary day to have these three men, so loving of the city, continuing on, each one of them, because it's a remarkable group of people that work together, I mean, really work together. You'll see factions of government always fighting. I don't even know who's a Democrat and who's a Republican here, and I don't want them to say, because they really don't truly follow that. What they follow is what's best for the city of Las Vegas. I think it's simply incredible. We're a hard-working group, we're totally dedicated, and it's just such a thrill to have you guys back. So, following right along. Okay, would Councilman Anthony's wife, Bernadette, please come forward? So nice to see you, this is wonderful. Good morning, how are you? Good to see you. We're very pleased to have you here with us today, with your wonderful husband, Councilman Stavros Anthony, and you are already at my right, so would you please raise your right hand while I deliver the official oath of office? Do you solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States, and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and with further that you will not, that you are not, under any direct or indirect obligation, to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to office position or employment in the city government of the city of Las Vegas, and further that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office on which you are about to enter, so help you God? And further, that your bona fide address is shown herein, and will immediately notify the city of Las Vegas of any change of address during your term of office?
I do.
So wonderful. Congratulations, I've just been so thrilled. And Bernadette? And we are pleased to present to you your certificate of election, and we will, please, go forward. Before, before we do that, I'd love you to say a few words. What a great mayor pro tem he's been, and just, we're so excited.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. First of all, I have to make a comment. Councilman Ross asked if I was going to wear my toga today, because I'm Greek, because he's wearing his garb, but I have to correct him, a toga is for Romans, that's for Italians. However, there is an elite Greek military squad that, called Ebzonis, that does wear a military type of dress like that, but I just don't, okay, a kilt, but I don't have one, so I thought I'd just wear my suit today. So, anyway, I just wanted to clear that up. First of all, I'm absolutely honored to be re-elected to represent Ward 4, and I want to thank a couple of folks. First of all, I want to thank my wife, Bernadette, 32 years have been married, and I guess we're, we're stuck for another 32 years, and what's important is, she always complains I don't buy her enough flowers, so there you go for today. You're, you're, you're all set. I just want to recognize my two daughters, Irene and Elizabeth, who couldn't be here today. Just want to thank everyone that supported me the last couple of months to get me re-elected, my campaign staff, people that put signs in their yards, folks that walk neighborhoods for me, people that made a campaign contribution, people that opened their house up to allow their neighbors to come in so I could chat with them and let them know about the city of Las Vegas and Ward 4, so everybody that, all the organizations that endorsed me. So thank you very much for doing that, and I'm looking forward to another four years. This is my second term. I'll tell you, this is a great city council. As the mayor mentioned, the four years that I've been on, everything is professional. We all get along very well, we all have great discussions, and when we disagree, we disagree, and we don't take it personal, and we move on. And that is a great organization to be with, a great city council, and I just want to thank them for, for allowing me to participate with them on the city council. I want to thank the mayor for asking me to be the mayor pro tem, and I'm assuming I'm going to continue to be the mayor pro tem as of today, thank you. Okay, we haven't had that discussion yet, so.
I need to be lobby.
Okay, well.
No, you're my man.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. I want to thank Betsy, our city manager, and her staff. I mean, this is, it's great to work for an organization like the city of Las Vegas. The four years that I've been on, when I've asked Betsy, or her staff, or a city employee to ask them to do something in Ward 4 because a constituent calls up and says there's graffiti, or a sign, or a stop sign, it's done the next day. I mean, it's really amazing that our employees are dedicated to making sure the city of Las Vegas is a great place to live and work, and that's what I plan on doing the next four years. I have a great staff, Becky, over here, and Anthony, I'm not sure Anthony, Anthony's in the back there. These two folks and myself, I want to say, work very hard to make sure Ward 4 is a great place to live and a great place to work, to make sure that I support the other city council members and their wards, and to make sure downtown continues to thrive, because the last, the last four years were pretty difficult, with former mayor Oscar Goodman, our current mayor. The city of Las Vegas was taking its toll the last four years, but it's coming back, and this city is going to be great. And it's because of the city council, the mayor, and the city of Las Vegas, and the residents who live in our city, we're going to make sure this is a great place to live. So, thank you very much, and God bless all of you.
Okay, a couple of pictures? Okay, Councilman Bob Beers, would you please come to my right to be sworn in as council member for Ward 2? He is fun, I'll tell you. I mean, I'm looking into those eyes, very serious, but he always has a very dry joke, so I'm a little nervous here. Okay, so I'll be very serious. Do you solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States and government thereof, and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and further that you are not, under any direct or indirect obligation, to vote for, appoint, or elect any person to office position or employment in city government of the city of Las Vegas, and further that you will faithfully perform the duties of the office on which you are about to enter, so help you God? And further, that your bona fide address is shown herein, and you will immediately notify the city of Las Vegas of any change of address during your term of office?
I will.
I will.
Thank you, and we now would like to present you with your certificate of election. And we are just so unbelievably proud and thrilled, and I think you might want to say something.
Sure, thank you. My family was so very proud of me when I became a CPA. Sorry, Dad. My dad is back in the back, he did make it. Wave your hand, thank you, sir. I'm holding up the recognition of some citizens who have made much more significant contributions to the well-being of this city than I have made, so let's get on with the show, Mayor.
The most unbelievably self-effacing man, please, let's have a picture. By our 20th swearing-in, we really'd have this down pat. Thank you. So, thank you all for joining us today, and that concludes the official swearing-in ceremony, and just give us two secs. Moving on with our ceremonial agenda, I'd like to invite Municipal Court Administrator Matt Fisk to join us here at the podium. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. I am proud to announce that the April Employee of the Month is David Orton. Good morning. David, please join us. Good morning, good morning, sort of. David is a, here he comes, where he's stuck without a front-row seat, we're so thrilled.
Thank you. Sure, we also have Chief Judge Leon here, who would like to recognize Mr. Orton, along with the mayor.
Okay, David is the judicial, or a judicial enforcement officer, and has been with the city since 2011. David recognized that the court's enforcement unit had no consistent way to manage and track the defendants who are not satisfying their court obligations. David developed a case-tracking spreadsheet for judicial enforcement officers, and provided each officer with a workbook to streamline this process. This is so important to the city because it ensures that defendants are meeting their obligations. Through David's efforts, the judicial enforcement unit may now easily contact delinquent defendants linked to important documents and set up automated, automated email reminders. Based on fiscal year 2013 enforcement efforts thus far, the municipal court is estimating that the judicial enforcement unit will collect an additional $700,000, thanks to David's efforts to streamline the system. That is simply an incredible accomplishment. This is a great example of an employee making an extra effort to address a problem and find a solution. The result has been that the city is monitoring the issue and is also bringing in hundreds of thousands of additional dollars. So on behalf of the city council, it's a pleasure to name David the April 2013 Employee of the Month, and along with this award, David has received a $100 Visa gift card, compliments of One Nevada Credit Union, and a $100 gift card from Mundo Restaurant. In addition, a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPaw. He has also received various other awards from the city and council to recognize his great work. To our left, you will see the street sign with David's name on it, that will be posted in front of City Hall on Main Street for the next 30 days. And I'd like Matt first, Matt Fisk, to say a few words, and then we'll hear from David. But we are so very proud of you, congratulations, what an honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. We are very proud to Mr. Orton, to David, and very grateful for his efforts. He has a nice way of working with, with staff collaboratively, and I know that our Chief Judge has prepared a few comments to honor your efforts, so I'm going to go ahead and give the time to her.
Thank you. Just briefly, good morning, Mayor Goodman, and members of the council. On behalf of all the courts, I want to say thank you very much for recognizing David. We certainly believe that he deserves this award today. And to you, David, congratulations. In a very short amount of time, because David has just joined us in 2011, he's made a huge impact on us at the court, and so when we have employees such as yourself that come up, as the mayor said, with these innovative, creative solutions, it helps all of us do our jobs well. So congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you, everybody that's here. This is a beautiful, beautiful plaque here, I appreciate that. I'll, you know, be quick, because I don't want to, you know, overtalk people that just won elections or anything like that, so. But, and I'm sure there's very important business for you guys to get to today, so first, I want to thank our honorable mayor, every councilperson, as well as every member of the city manager's office that take time out each month to recognize employees. That's a great thing. As, as an employee, to be recognized beyond your paycheck, which is already a great thing, but to be recognized is, is an amazing thing, so thank you for that. This wasn't mentioned in any of the information that was distributed about me being, on the receiving end of this, this honor, but I am currently a employee that's subject to reduction in force. I was with the Parks, Recreation, and Neighborhood Services Division for almost eight years, before I was riffed in 2010. Thank you. And, so this is really my second career with the city. And I only mention that because I think it exemplifies how gracious I am to be here with this great organization. Thank you. And just, very quickly, I just want to recognize a couple people, you know, my supervisors for their, their belief and trust in me, you know, their example is a huge part in any success that I've had as an employee. So specifically to John Williams, Lieutenant Jack Manning, Mr. Fisk, and all the municipal court judges, thank you so much for, for all the support that you show us. And this needs to be shared with my fellow employees, the great team that I work with every day in the judicial enforcement unit, the entire criminal division, and the whole of the Las Vegas Municipal Court. Thank you so much.
What an example of what the city has gone through over these years, to know that we have had to release people from employment in order to make the budgets balance, and still to be able to deliver services, but to know such a bright, caring, young man is back with us. This is simply incredible, and we are so proud, and we're proud that you love the city and that you hung in there to get back with us and do this. I know, Matt, and your honor, I know this is just, we're just all grinning from ear to ear and so proud of you. So much so, that we're going to have a picture taken. Okay? Give us, in lieu of what, Councilman?
Pay raise.
Okay, in lieu of the deserved pay raise and a re-urges. For our next item, I'd like to ask Betty Evans, the Chair of the Las Vegas Senior Citizens' Advisory Board, to join us at the podium. Betty is going to recognize our Senior of the Quarter. Always there with us, wonderful.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilpeople. I think this is the best city in the world, and I think that not only do we have the best employees, we have the best seniors, and they are out there volunteering in our community. And today, I would like to honor Pat Refson, so would you come up to the podium with me, Pat? Pat and I became good friends when we started volunteering for Make-A-Wish Foundation, and that's why Pat's here today. She exemplifies what Make-A-Wish does for our children. Our children have life-threatening conditions, and we grant them wishes, their one true wish. And I think we have some pictures that go along with what I'm going to try to say. Is that right? Okay, I'm going to talk out here so I can see. This is our family that we go to meet, and we interview them, Pat interviewed them. This little boy wanted Star Wars Legos. this, by decorating the room or doing whatever we can in that room. So Pat found these. This is our little boy being surprised, right? This is Sean. Legos, all right. You know, that wish to those children means a lot. And a lot of times, what happens is they get better because their wishes come through, their family is happy, they have health, strength, and joy. Oh, we had some surprise visitors. The storm troopers. And meeting and understanding, how do you use your saber correctly? And of course, the wish granters get to have some fun, too. And there's always a celebratory meal. You see the pizza, pizza, soda, more sugar. All right, more sugar. We love sugar. And you know what? There's always a time that comes at the end of the wish where Pat is just really instrumental in finding out what was the best thing about the wish, what did it mean to them, and we have to write a report. And Pat is a retired schoolteacher, and so her reports are better than any of the rest of us. But not only does she do that, but she helps out at our fundraisers, she tutors in the local schools for children with reading, and just goes on and on. And so, Pat, I want to thank you so much for the efforts that you do for our community and especially for Make-A-Wish, but for everything you do in our community. So we have a little plaque for you.
Congratulations. We congratulate, thank you.
So our fan club is our staff and other volunteers. Pat's husband and best friend are here today. So let's get a picture.
I want to thank everyone for this recognition, but I realize, and I hope everybody else realizes, that I'm just part of a team, a most wonderful team, for several years now. And it is through the hard-working staff at the Make-A-Wish office, the dedicated volunteers, including the wish granters as part of Make-A-Wish, and just as importantly, the support, the generous support of the people in our community. Because without all that, we could not work the magic that we work for these children. And the impact of the wish is just magnified, intensified to the nth degree because of everyone who's involved in granting the wish. So it is my honor to be part of such a wonderful team. And thank you, Betty, especially because Betty is not going to sing her own praises, but she is another exemplary volunteer, not only of Make-A-Wish, but also in the community. Betty is a wish grantor who goes beyond by doing a lot of sewing the outfits for the children when they want to be somebody, or like the Dorothy outfit you made for the Oz Wish. But anyway, we have to go on with the rest of the meeting. Okay, so I just want to say thank you to everyone who's involved. And we do have the best volunteers and seniors.
Thank you, Betty, and you're a leader for us. And talking about volunteers, in fact, eye-popping volunteers this morning. For our next item, I want to invite David Cummings up to the podium, please. David is the founder and commander of the All Volunteer Red Rock Search and Rescue. And it's so nice to see you again. What a great guy and what a great group we have here. Everyone knows, of course, that we live in a very special environment and one that offers us all great outdoor opportunities. But sometimes we're out there enjoying those wonderful opportunities, and something goes wrong. We get lost, or we have accidents, or we just generally need help. And the Red Rock Search and Rescue is an organization that's here to help us all at that time when we need it. What is incredible about this is it's entirely a volunteer effort. David formed the Red Rock Search and Rescue in 2012, a year ago, as a not-for-profit, that people don't get paid, that is 100% donation-supported. For those of you who are listening, 100% donation-supported. This is an incredible organization. Red Rock Search and Rescue is a professional team of highly-trained volunteer citizens that are available 365 days a year, I'm sure 24/7, anywhere in Nevada and in communities along the Colorado River in Arizona. David has more than 15 years of volunteer search and rescue experience with our teams in California and is now training our citizens here in all their important skills. Of course, we know that we have our own fabulous Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department that has an excellent search and rescue team, but sometimes they run out of personnel to be able to attend to the many, many calls that are brought in. And David's team has allowed for that additional support of the region, acting as a support to Metro. And I think back to the FEMA training, going in for the Federal Emergency Management training that I was privileged to participate in right after I took office. And all I can tell you that those two years ago, that training was absolutely instrumental to know how all of us living here in this community absolutely need to be part of keeping our eyes and ears open to everything and not expect other people always to be taking care of us. We have to do it, and we saw that just two days ago. And it is, we have to keep our eyes and ears open. But how phenomenal for us to have this wonderful, wonderful group here today. And I'm going to ask David, and is Dana Richardson here? Where are you? These two gentlemen came to my office to talk about, come, 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 to talk about all the involvements that they've had. And so, you know, really welcome. I mean, what a great group. Nice to see you again. Perhaps you'd like to tell everyone a little bit more in depth.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. Yeah, we're not a gun and barbecue club. When we formed this, we formed it to be a serious organization. And to give you some numbers, we had 12 clients last year. We ran nearly 100 missions. If the city or county had to pay us for our time, our training hours, our equipment, our deployment, our deployment was almost 100 missions servicing these 12 clients. We solved 11 of those cases. One we're still working on, we've been working on it for over 365 days, and we're deploying again this weekend to continue that search. But if you had to write the bill for us, you'd spend seven figures. That's how much money we've saved the community by doing this all free. Each and every member is certified in first aid, CPR. We have paramedics, we have Metro officers, NHP officers, we have stay-at-home moms, we have retired people, we have plumbers, military, you name it, all involved in this group. We are truly, truly professional, and we are here to serve you anytime. You know, there is a time when an agency has to call a search. They've determined that it's recovery mode, and they don't have the dollars and cents. And that family's left standing on the curb going, who do I turn to? Who's going to help me find my loved one? Well, that's us. We step up to the curb. Anyone can call us. We'll take it over, and we'll continue, as we did this past year. We solved 11, we're working on our 12th, and hopefully, we can solve that soon.
We are just so grateful and so proud. And so today, we do have a proclamation to give to you and to announce that April 17, 2013, today, is Red Rock Search and Rescue Day here in the city of Las Vegas, and ask all citizens to join in recognizing that R-R-S-R was formed in honor of Ron Kirk, a hiker who was lost at the Red Rock. Being a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, they are 100% volunteer search and rescue funded entirely by the donations and members' individual supports. So their services are free to our community 24/7, 365 days a year, and we are so proud of you. And I'd like you all to rise so we can properly thank you and applaud you all. Simply phenomenal. Absolutely, we thank you. And it's a way to stay fit, because I know we have city marshals involved, too, who talk about the training you take. We are really, really grateful.
This is only 25% of us. The rest of the people are at work. We're close to 200 volunteers.
This is simply unbelievable. And with that, I would like to give you this proclamation. Do you have an office?
Yes, we do.
How do we get, how do they contact you, and what do they do?
If anyone would like to get involved or send us money, you can go to redrocksar.org on the internet, and there's all the information there about us.
So the actual website is?
www redrocksar.org.
Thank you. So we're waiting to join and send money, and way to go. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Dana, thank you. Now, you have the next one. I don't have any papers. And at this point now, Mayor Pro-Ten, Stavros Anthony, he has a proclamation and excitement.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I want to tell you a little story. A couple of months ago, I was in my office, and Becky came in and said, there's a nice group of ladies that are in the conference room, they're touring City Hall, would you just go say hi to them and chat with them? I said, of course I will. So I went in and chatted with them, and I found out they were the Assistance League of Las Vegas, and I have to say, I'd never heard of them. So we started talking, and ended up finding out we had a connection from 30 years ago, when I was with Metro for 29 years. And 30 years ago, I was a young police officer, I was pushing the black and white around, and we had these teddy bears in our trunk, and they were wrapped in plastic. And I can't tell you how many times I went on a call, and there was a little kid that was abused, a victim of a crime, saw a crime, was in shambles, and I would go out to my trunk, and I would get this teddy bear, and I would give him this teddy bear, and it helped 100%, because the little kid had something to hold on to, something to distract them from the chaos that was going on. And I never knew where these teddy bears came from. They were just always in the trunk. Every time you took one out, the next day, there'd be another one in the trunk. And just kind of went on my way, and 30 years later, I'm sitting in this conference room with these ladies, and we're talking about it, and I said, well, how come I've never heard of the Assistance League of Las Vegas? And she goes, we just fly under the radar screen, we do our thing for the community, and we don't really ask for recognition. So I decided today that we are going to bring them on the radar screen, and we're going to recognize them. So first of all, I'd like to ask the President of the Assistance League of Las Vegas, Nancy Leslie, would you please come forward and give her a nice round of applause? And Amy Tabor is up here, too. Her husband is Roger Tabor, very involved in downtown soccer. So let me tell you a little bit about the Assistance League of Las Vegas. It's a nonprofit organization established locally in 1976 that provides programs and services enriching the lives of children in need. They are an all-volunteer organization with no paid staff, and their programs are completely self-funded through grants, fundraising events, contributions from the community, and our thrift shop sales. Every contribution, whether it's in dollars or time, goes directly to a child who needs and deserves it. The Assistance League of Las Vegas's Operation School Bell has helped clothe over 8,000 children this year. For many children, these are the first new items of clothing that they've ever received. While Assistance League Las Vegas are happy the new clothes give incentive for regular attendance, higher academic performance, and greater self-esteem, their true reward comes from big smiles on little faces. Assistance League Las Vegas has recognized a tremendous increase in the need for immediate emergency clothing, especially in the low-income, at-risk schools. They developed Assistance League Closet to meet this need, and there are now 34 schools, and it's growing. Volunteers work with school counselors to restock the closets needed, and over 1,500 students have received items so far this school year. Assistance League Las Vegas provides 576 layettes and 60 baby blankets to the UMC Baby Steps program, and this gift is given to expectant mothers to encourage their prenatal care. Assistance League Las Vegas members also regularly visit nearby elementary schools to help in classrooms and offer one-on-one reading time with students. Again, the Assistance League Las Vegas gives teddy bears to 26 Las Vegas agencies, and those agencies keep the bears on hand to give to children in a crisis situation. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor, myself, and the entire city council, we're going to have another Las Vegas Day. I would like to proclaim April 17, 2013, as Assistance League Las Vegas Day, and thank you very much.
This is awesome. Thank you. Thank you very much. I did have a speech prepared, but you said it all. We are a nonprofit, we're 100% volunteer. Our funding comes from grants and donations. We do have a thrift shop at 6446 West Charleston. You're welcome to come by and see Operation School Bell and see the thrift shop. We also accept donations. You summed up our programs very well, and you have your own new teddy bear. It's time. Thanks so much.
And how do they give contributions?
You can mail it to us at our address, 6446 West Charleston, or look on the website, ALLV.org. Thank you.
And could I have the entire group of Assistance League ladies, please stand up and give them a nice round of applause? Thank you very much for coming down.
This is just grand, and I will tell you, that's the Donald Reynolds Building where Assistance League is housed. Very easy to see. And I gather the same email website for volunteer efforts as well, and you have luncheons and do-things to continue to raise money. But this is simply wonderful. So anybody who has gently-used clothing, they can drop off as well. There used to be a bin out there, as I recall. There's a door in the back and doorbell, so remember, that is West Charleston at the Don Reynolds Assistance League Building. It's simply fabulous what you do. I mean, what a great city we live in with all these wonderful volunteers. And at which point, our wonderful, now kilted, returning councilman in his last four years, it is to you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin, I neglected to recognize Michelle Thaks and Tuesday James in my office, who have tirelessly served the residents of Orange Six, and the families and the businesses. And I want to express my appreciation to them. And David, there is a request for 200 orange kilts for your team. Okay? Just want to throw that at you. I know you're all eager to get it. Before I start, I can't do this without the bagpipes. So I'm going to introduce Kurt Johnson from IAFF Local 1285 Color Guard. Kurt, would you start this off? Kurt, would you start this off? Give him a round of applause. Thank you, buddy. Thank you. Kurt, you gotta stay down here. Kurt, you gotta stay down here. Kurt, 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 I still need you here, man. You're a prop now, okay? You're a prop now. Kurt is with our own Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, it's great to have him here, and he's very talented, and took special permission to get you here, man, thanks for being here. Today is a recognition of National Tartan Day. Before I start that, I want to bring up Sharon Chandler from the St. Andrews Society. Come on up, Sharon. And also Brian Towers from the Las Vegas Celtic Society. And bring, bring who you got with you, Brian, because any, any man who can pull this off deserves to stand up here with us.
And could you tell us which part of your wig?
There you go.
Wonderful.
Yes, I'm wearing a Ross tartan, the Ross clan tartan. And these two gentlemen are wearing their family clan tartans.
What are they?
Brian?
My tartan is Crawford.
Crawford?
McDonald of the Isles.
How about our bagpipe?
Oh, sorry, Kurt?
This is actually registered for the Las Vegas firefighters. This is the official Las Vegas tartan.
Right on. And there's also an official Nevada tartan.
And yours?
McNutton.
McNutton, okay, so we're all here, we're all here. Well, before I hand someone the microphone, today, it's my honor to recognize National Tartan Day. This date was chosen to commemorate the signing of the Declaration of Arbroath on April 6th, 1320. Our own Declaration of Independence was based on this document. Americans of Scottish descent have played a vibrant and influential role in the development of the United States of America. National Tartan Day was first officially observed in 1998 by the passage of U.S. Senate Resolution 155. Today, over 11 million Americans claim Scottish and Scottish-Irish roots, making them the eighth-largest ethnic group in the United States. I would like to take this opportunity to honor the many individual invaluable contributions, accomplishments, and cultural traditions of the members of the Celtic community in Las Vegas. So Brian, I'm going to give it to Sharon first, Burrows first. Sharon, I want you to talk to us about the St. Andrews Society.
The St. Andrews Society was formed almost 20 years ago. We're a cultural and educational society. We promote the Scottish culture through several events, Something Scottish, our National Tartan Day celebration, our Burns Night Dinner, and we also have an educational program called Scotland in the Suitcase, that we take into the schools, and it's become so popular, they ask us now to senior groups and things like that to speak. And I'm proud to say that one of our members was designed and got approved, the Nevada State Tartan, and it's approved by the Lord Lion in Scotland.
So, how do we get in touch with the St. Andrews Society?
We have a website, sasn.org. It stands for St. Andrews Society of Southern Nevada, and we'd be pleased to come and speak to any group.
Okay, you have a phone number?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon, for being here. Now, Brian's got, I'm saving Brian for the last, because he's going to punch this thing home, because there's an event coming up here that's going to be spectacular. Brian?
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Brian Towers, I'm the president of the Las Vegas Celtic Society, and we host the annual Celtic Gathering and Highland Games out at historic Floyd Lamb Park at Tulley Springs. Beautiful park, if you've never been there, you need to get out there, it's gorgeous. Our gates open at 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. this weekend. Our festival truly gives a Celtic vibe, so everybody is Celtic this weekend coming up. So come on out. We have plenty of vendors, Celtic Marketplace, good food, beer gardens, whiskey tasting, and we have over 100 heavy athletes throwing everything from telephone poles, to rocks, to you name it, that's something to really see.
Small children.
Yeah, keep track of your small kids, that's true. We also have live music everywhere, I mean, we have a pipe band competition, piping and drumming, we have Celtic dancing, Highland dancing, Irish dancing, there's something for everyone.
What kind of food is Celtic food?
Like, we have bangers, and mash, and mushy peas, and...
What is a banger?
A banger is a sausage.
Okay.
And we have heritage, we have meat pies, which are phyllo dough with meat, and...
Greek?
Yeah, a little Greek in there, we got a little baklava in there. Really, there's something for everyone. So, look, this is our ninth year, if you haven't been there, really, tell your friends and come on out, it's truly one of the best events in this town. And you can find, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, all-volunteer organization, as well as just about everybody here today. And you can find us at lasvegascelticsociety.org, and please, come out to the park.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Brian, this is, it is not, it is not free. Brian, you want to tell us how much it costs to get him?
A general admission is $15, however, if you bring a canned food item, a non-perishable food item, and donate it to Safe Nest, you can get a $2 off for, for your efforts of...
And children, the same price?
Children under 5 are free, 5 to 10 is $10.
So it's affordable for families to come out?
Oh, yes, very affordable.
And I have to tell you, folks, if you have not experienced this weekend, you have to go, because it is an incredible, eye-opening...
I forgot something. We also have a Kaylee, which is Gaelic for "party" on Fremont Street. Well, I can't forget that, yes. Come down to Fremont Street, festivities start at 6:30 Friday night, and 8 o'clock Saturday night. And we'll have a heavy athletic demonstration down there, the sheath toss, excuse me, which is these heavy athletes taking a pitchfork and a hay bale and throwing it sky-high. It's something to see, it really is. And there's plenty, and we'll have bagpipe bands down there, and Irish and Highland dancing as well.
And I have to say, when you fill up Fremont Street with several pipe bands and drums, it is a spectacular sound and sight. The dancers are phenomenal, and these are little girls, all the way to grown women, who are competing in this contest. I'm so proud that you are doing this, and the city of Las Vegas can be part of this. Folks, I encourage you to come down and have a great time with your family. So, without further ado, we, the mayor and the city council of Las, of the city of Las Vegas proudly proclaim April 6th, 2013, as National Tartan Day, and we call upon the citizens and residents in this community to recognize the accomplishments of great Scottish Americans. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And looking at the bagpipe, I don't know who ever invented that, but that's quite
an instrument. Do you have any idea how it works? I know you're blowing at this and not at the top.
Well, I don't know how it came about, I... The history is actually Middle Eastern, and there's many forms of bagpipes. You have Pakistani, you have the Great Highlands, which is most commonly heard, you have the Kaylee pipes, you have the Ellen pipes, which are played by the Irish. There are so many different types of bagpipes out there to, available to learn, and I believe the Ellen pipes are probably the most difficult.
How does this work?
I don't know. No, no.
He does very well, but you blow where?
These are called drones. These are drones. There's a base drone and two tenor drones. We have the chanter, and of course, the mouthpiece to inflate the bag. And it, actually, the bag is supplying the air to the, all the instruments, you're just keeping it filled with the pipes and squeezing on it. And it's quite a, interesting instrument.
And this is something that everybody, if there were other people with bagpipes, these would be the pieces that might be different for a different tone? Or are they always the same?
No, for the Great Highlands, they're always the same, but they're, you know, it's, like I said, as you get into Kaylee pipes, and Ellen pipes, and the French pipes, there's all sorts of different bagpipes out there. And many different societies play them, then these are going to differ, but never on the Great Highlands are they going to differ.
And when did you start, how many years ago did you start playing or practicing?
The, probably about seven years ago.
Oh, so it's something easy to pick up, anybody interested? He didn't have to start as a child. Are you an A-rated bagpipe player?
Actually, there's grade 1, 2, 3, and 4 bagpipe players, and grade 4B, I'm about 7.
Wait a minute, 1 not being the best?
1 is the best.
Oh, my gosh. You did a great job, we will send in our vote for you. Move you right up to 4. Great, thank you. And the bag says Las Vegas, way to go.
Yeah, we, our union, this is actually, actual turnout gear.
Wonderful.
And it was made by one of our pipers' mothers.
Unbelievable, great. Well, thank you very much for doing this, and I feel you are... And wait, this, oh, is this one yours? This is you? Okay. I thought they said sheep-throwing. No, 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 not sheep, something else, that's with the spear, sheet. Sheath-throwing. Because I thought we would certainly send Councilman Ross down there to throw sheep, I wanted to see that. Oh, gosh. Anyway, for our final item this morning, our wonderful Councilman Barlow from Ward 5, who gave up downtown heart, and has expanded his district into the Northwest as well, has a wonderful, wonderful couple of comments here, and we're so thrilled, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Today has been a very exciting ceremonial. I always have an opportunity to tease my colleague, Councilman Ross. I asked him in the back, I says, "How much would you charge me to touch your legs?" And he said, "A lot," so... At least, at least, at least I'd know he was willing, so...
I have to tell you something, during my husband's tenure, you knew it was Bombay Sapphire after 5. You would think this council has been imbibing, trust me, only coffee, only coffee and water. Back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Growing, excuse me, growing up here in Las Vegas, I've, I literally had a great childhood, and I spent countless, countless hours in the library. The library was a place where I would go and just really enjoy myself, reading many, many books, and having an opportunity to take advantage of all of the great programming in our library system. And so today, I really want to bring up someone special, Ms. Jeanne Goodrich, if you'll please come forward. She's the director of the Las Vegas Clark County Library District.
Good lady.
A wonderful lady.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. And I know, and I know I see some of my former colleagues in the library, you all come up, I haven't seen you in a minute. I used to be the chairman of the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees, and I don't get a chance to see you all too often. But the library is a very special place, not only for me, but for all of us, specifically our children. And the library does so many wonderful programming. The programming that exists today is totally different than the programming than it was when I was growing up, because they have computers and a number of new technologies that I'm still trying to learn. And so for that, I have a special presentation for them today, but before I present the, the award here today, I would like for you to at least share some of the programming and some of the activities that are taking place in the Las Vegas Clark County Library District. Jeanne?
Thank you so much, Councilman, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd also like to recognize that we have two library trustees with us here today, Trustee Ido Ito-Ralde and Robin Wadley-Munir. And Councilman Barlow didn't introduce my colleagues, but we have Karen Branwell and Pat Marvel up here, who are very able marketing and community relations department employees. I'm always happy to meet with the council during National Library Week, which is this week, April 14th through the 20th. I wanted to give you a little bit of an update, we've had a number of really interesting accomplishments and new initiatives that we've started this last year. Our library board in February adopted our new strategic framework, which capsulizes our priorities, and the name of the framework is Read, Learn, Achieve: Your Library's Community Impact. We're very much of the mind, as many other service providers are around the country, that we need to listen to you, we need to know what's going on in the community, and we need to be part of solving the many issues that come before our community. So we work collaboratively and in partnership with many, many other community organizations, as well as the school district, and the city, and the county. And when we're looking at Read, Learn, Achieve, that says it all. We need to teach our young people how to read well, so that they do well in school, and if they do well in school, they can graduate, and they can achieve and contribute to our community. We also are doing a lot to support small businesses and entrepreneurs. We were invited to be part of Resource Row at the Chamber's recent preview Las Vegas. We demonstrated information about a new tool we have called Business Decision. This is a tool that's available to anybody with a library card, you can access it online. This is the kind of tool that businesses spend tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on. It gives you information vital to deciding whether or not to establish a business, where to establish it, it gives you intelligence about the community and the potential for customers in your community. All of our reference librarians know about it, so if this is of interest to you, please stop in and talk to them, and they can set up some individual training for you, and you can learn how to use it. On Saturday, May 18th, at our Sahara West Library, the district will be holding a small business expo. This is a free event, going from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., with several speakers discussing aspects of starting or growing a small business, and vendors and exhibitors with products and resources to help participants succeed. It's free and open to the public, attendance is limited, so if you're interested, be sure to get there by 10 o'clock, so you can be part of it. We have a fabulous new program called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. The idea is, it's so important to read to young children, we're encouraging parents to read 1,000 books before their children go to kindergarten. This sounds like a lot, but if you think about it, one book a night, over three years, is 1,095 books, or three books a night, or if you've worked with young children, the same book three times a night, is 1,095 books in just one year. It's very achievable, if you're interested, come in, we give you a packet, there's some log sheets, there's incentives along the way, children get book bags if they reach a certain number of books, and it's a great way to start that habit of reading and enjoying books. We've already distributed over 3,000 folders since this program was created. Another fabulous new project that we've got is, we were selected as one of only 12 libraries nationally to receive a planning grant from the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences and the MacArthur Foundation for the development of digital learning labs for youth. These labs will provide access to 21st-century digital technologies, and help teens move beyond consuming media to actually creating media. By working with mentors using digital media technologies related to graphic design, photography, music, and video, teens will develop the skills and knowledge critical for academic success and career opportunities. So it's helping our young people become tooled up, geared up, for the 21st century and the new kinds of jobs that we're seeing in our community. And then finally, our summer reading program, Club Read, starts again this summer, signups start June 1st, just around the corner. This is a wonderful way to keep kids reading. Some parents think it's a remedial program, it's not that at all, it's a way to keep kids engaged with reading, have a good time, if they're good readers, it's a great program for them. We have lots of programs, we have lots of prizes along the way. Kids can sign up online or in the libraries, keep track of what they read, and the programs include things like puppet shows, craft shows, storytellers, music and dance programs. So lots of great activities at your library, we've distributed to council members information. If you need any additional handouts, please let me know, and we'll get them to you. If you'd like to learn more about what the library has to offer, or more about any of these programs I've mentioned, go to our website, www.lvccld.org, so that's Las Vegas Clark County Library District dot org, and you'll find an amazing amount of material available to you, and just as the councilman said, way beyond what you had as a young person when you came to the library. So come on in, or go online and find us. Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Jeanne, on behalf of the city of Las Vegas, the city of Las Vegas and the office of the city council proudly proclaim this day National Library Week, and the proclamation reads, "Libraries play an important role in our local community, and libraries enable the people of Las Vegas to pursue lifelong learning through responsive collections, electronic resources, and innovative services, and libraries are helping level the playing field for job seekers with public libraries providing access to job databases and other online resources, and libraries play an important role in the education and development of children with preschool story hours and programs that encourage family literacy. And in times of economic hardship, Las Vegas residents turn to and depend on their local public library." And now, we the ma, we the members, the mayor, and the members of the Las Vegas City Council encourage all Las Vegas residents to visit the library, to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your local public library, April 14th through the 20th, 2013, National Library Week in the city of Las Vegas. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Great, come check it out.
Good.
Come check it out.
May I do one, one more, just quickly, out of order? Uh, today is my son, Bailey Jalen's 15th birthday party, I mean, birthday, and, and we're gonna have a party for him.
Birthday party?
Birthday party at the city council. Today is his 15th birthday, and, um, and I just want to say happy birthday to my eldest son. Thank you.
And so where's the party to which we're all invited?
The Goodman's residence.
Because we have so many pictures we want to take, we will, um, take a brief recess here, and we will begin the next portion at 10:30. It's 10:15, but for anybody who wants pictures, uh, please, please. Okay, uh, end of that recess, and thank you all. Um, I do want to just make some comment. As you notice, Councilwoman Tarkanian is not here today. And Kyle Andrews is the son of a great friend of mine, who is a philanthropist and a wonderful fundraiser for children through the Shriners. And I just thought that Kyle, being interested in politics, wanted to come and see us in action. He's been here since 7:30, watching everything that's going on, with great amusement and also great gratification, because he gets to see the other good side of the job. So Kyle Andrews is our guest today, and welcome, Kyle.
We welcome you. Could you lower your seat? You're much taller than Councilman Coffin.
Oh, that's all right. I'm vertically challenged, and I make no bones about it.
No, 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 further down.
It's all right. It doesn't hurt my golf game.
There, that's better. Thank you. And our attorney, Val Steed, I think, has someone with him.
Yes, thank you, members of the council. This is Katrina Samuels, to my right. She is externing with our office. She's been in the Criminal Division for some time, and has just started this week in our Civil Division. She graduated from Eldorado High School and went to UNLV on her undergraduate. She went to law school in Baton Rouge, is, has passed, I'm sorry, she's taken the bar in February. She's calmly awaiting the results, which will come out next month, and I don't know if she's delighted to be here or not. I hope she is.
Thank you very much, and welcome, Katrina. And Eldorado is having a celebration, I think, either Friday or Saturday morning. I hope you'll be there. It's a 30th anniversary, I believe. Maybe it's more than that, but you're too young to have been there the 30 years, and we know you didn't repeat grade school again. So, anyway, we are now off on item, agenda, item 11. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We will, since you have another opportunity at the end and on the items, we will set the time at one minute. Please introduce yourselves.
Thank you. Todd Parlow, 240 North 19th Street. And I'd just like to say that the looks and the improvement in the city's attorney's office have certainly improved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do want to let you know, I have a large group of cards here on item number 38, so we do have them, and we will allow you to have, if you could, talk together and elect someone. No, we can't do that. So, we will get to that at the time, and anything that was submitted today for us to present, because of the technology and everything else, we're not going to be able to show it, but we are putting everything in the hands of the clerk. So, thank you very much, and yes, sir.
Oh, that was 38.
It's 38. Also, if you could hand it right here to our clerk's office. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
But if you want to wait, not have it now?
Right, because it's only a minute, and my hope is that we cannot allow everybody that's here the full three minutes, but we will. That's why I'm asking you to appoint someone or two, certainly let two people speak. We do have presentations that have been given to our Communications Department, but because of a variety of issues that don't need to go into it, because it wasn't in on a timely fashion to us and just given to us, we have given what has been given to us to our city clerk. We would encourage you to do that also, if you have materials to be delivered. And at the time of 38, I will certainly, since I'm looking at you, would give it, two of you, three minutes, so please, if you would.
Okay, we'll do that.
That's absolutely fine. One minute each. Okay, so if you'll set the timer, please come forward, state your name. We do not need your address, and any materials you have, you may turn in to the city clerk. And please go forward again, state your name.
Chuck Nochi, I'm the one that left you each a packet. You got them?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm opposition to 38 mainly. Safety issue, you saw the collisions, near collisions, and the privacy of all that.
Correct.
And so.
I think many of us have those same issues at hand, but this is sort of a different side to it, so we'll get to it. But thank you very much. You've got your name registered. Please come forward, and everyone that is going to announce, please come forward to help move us along. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Cindy Lake, Honorable Councilmembers, Honorable Mayor Goodman. I stand in opposition to item 38, mostly because we haven't considered unintended consequences of safety issues, but also of privacy issues. On my way here, I encountered no less than 50 cameras watching my every move. You know, we're being surveilled, and that's directly in conflict with the Fourth Amendment, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Morning, and please, again, just your name, not the address, is fine.
Jim Haber, and I am with an organization, Nevada Desert Experience, and we've opposed the military use of drones, and we oppose their integration into the domestic airspace, too. It's a slippery slope we are on, and how fast and slick it is, is up to bodies like this. Industry is, and cheerleaders are writing these regulations. Yes, codification is necessary. In the meantime, they are being integrated into the U.S. airspace, and so I would hope that there would be public hearings if the city of Las Vegas or any departments want to procure them. As far as this testing, I hope you would ask, are they going to be testing also the surveillance modes and the weaponization of these drones as part of this testing regime, or is it only about the safe integration with the commercial and private air? So, are they going to be testing the cameras? Are the test drones that the FAA is proposing use, will they be outfitted, or will they only be about the control? Will they be testing the small ones that don't really interfere with commercial airliners?
Okay, we have to go to our next, because you said one minute, and I thank you, and I think your concerns are well founded.
There are many issues, and I hope you will look at the ACLU's materials on this issue. Please check out the ACLU materials on this issue.
Next, please.
Mayor Goodman, thank you for your time. I want to elaborate on, Steve Smith.
Name?
Yeah, Steve Smith, sorry. I don't have much public speaking experience. I'm just a citizen talking.
You're doing fine.
I want to elaborate on what Cindy Lake said. I moved here, I think this is the greatest city in the world, too. I moved here to build a business three years ago. I loved it here three years ago, I still do, but the police helicopters are getting closer every single day. They buzz over my house, apartment, on the second floor at 3:00 in the morning, wake everybody up. The drones are just the next step of that. I mean, I think enough people are aware. The sad part is how much support this tyrannical state is getting. Once we go, it's too late.
Thank you very much. Next, Beresma, please.
Hello, my name is Tasha Heath. Madam Mayor and honorable City Councilmembers, drone testing is far from new. This isn't anything new, so I don't understand why this test site needs to be here. It has been said this test site could bring in many jobs and amounts of money. Will these jobs be going to Nevadans who are unemployed, or will they be going to contractors out of state who are already familiar with working on drones and unmanned vehicles? The article in the Las Vegas Sun stated on March 30th that this is about surveillance. So, I please ask you guys to look into this a little further before passing, because once we pass, we can't go back and make rules. There's no rules for these. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Mary Lou Anderson, also with the Interfaith Peace Organization here in town. We do a lot of work and research on drones and drone activity. So, I guess my biggest concern, and I'm happy to be able to get this on the record with the city council, is the issue I have with a quote-unquote "military national security" angle and stance that the city has decided to take by virtue of the words in this resolution. So, and I don't have time to talk about that, and I think probably some cohorts will do that, but as far as the financial impact, there's a statement on Page 2, Item 2, that says the council, the City Council of Las Vegas, Nevada, wants to lend general support to the efforts of the state by quote-unquote "looking for ways to sustain and expand the state of Nevada's direct support of the national security and defense sectors as military spending continues to be downsized in the foreseeable future." And I'm really happy to be a citizen and a member of this city, but quite frankly, I will not be happy personally or professionally if in any way the city feels that we need to financially support the state and financially support the federal government from a military standpoint. If we're going to financially support anything, I think, as everybody on the council knows, we've got a high rate of unemployment, we've got a high rate of homelessness. I think there's error in the language in this resolution, and I hope the council reconsiders it and really takes a look at what this resolution is about, even though the county's already supported it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Good morning. My name is Robert Walker. I want to address what looks to me like a false presentation by the proponents of the UAV. As I have here a document, I took off the Internet last night, I believe, where in 2010, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, under their silver shield, Nevada's approach to critical infrastructure procedure protection, asked some federal government agency to remove this information from their website, and the organization refused to do that because Metro had also informed a private company, Urban Environmental Research, LLC. Among the individuals are Paul Washiba, the CEO, Rachel Skidmore, project manager, John Morrison, project manager, and Ron Cameron, Senior Project Manager. They say they want to test these drones. They've already been tested. They have another agenda, something that's hidden, and that's what I would suggest, that we have an investigation about the two gentlemen that were here two weeks ago, who they represent and why they are presenting falsehoods to this august body.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Barry Johnston, Las Vegas resident. I also oppose this. There's no reason for us to have drones flying around and doing any testing. Once you take an inch, if they're given an inch, they'll take a mile. And if they start off on one little thing, it ends up going into, you know, a large investigation on things that don't even really matter. I don't see it something we need. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Goodman, Brett Pijunas from the Libertarian National Committee. How are you guys doing today?
How are you?
I also speak in opposition of this. In respect to time, you've heard other people speak, the one thing that concerns me the most, in addition to, of course, a clear violation of our civil liberties, is the fact that there really isn't any precedent set with this law yet. That concerns me, because we don't know what they can and cannot do. So, I'm going to encourage all of you to please take into consideration our civil liberties when you make a vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very concise. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jason Ellis, and I just want to make a few brief comments on the safety of drones. I know it's already been addressed, but there have been several news stories. There is a pilot at JFK Airport who saw a drone within 200 feet of his aircraft, 1,750 feet in the air, and this kind of safety issue could, you know, come up repeatedly, come up all the time, and, you know, we don't know about the regulations with the FAA, so, you know, really, there's no precedence, you know, with, you know, the safety issues with drones, and there have been incidents, because people are so untrusting of drones and, you know, skeptical of surveillance and just drones overall, that in Texas, a drone was shot down, and, you know, people may shoot a drone down, and you don't know where that'll land, and there could be other safety issues with drone crashes. There have been many predator drone crashes, and just basically, you know, civilians already obviously have been killed in the foreign wars, going after terrorists, and they say 50 civilians, innocent civilians, are killed for every terrorist. So, if they say they go after terrorists in the U.S., you know, and overall drone use in the future, that, you know, there could be many innocents killed, so.
Anybody else who wishes to speak, and if there's anyone in the back, please come forward, because it will save us the precious time that we need to. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Cynthia Nutter, speaking in opposition. I just want to say, 1984, we have to be careful with the decisions that we make today. I don't pretend to know everybody's agenda, whatever everybody plans on doing right now, I have no idea, but I know that if we begin to implement things today, in the future, it could leave room for other things to happen that would not benefit us in our society. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The stated applications for UAV drone technology by developers of drone technology, MITRE, MITRE, an independent think-tank of the Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency, known as DARPA, of the Department of Defense, is for domestic and civilian militarized applications. It's easy to imagine the use of microdrones, so-called lethal mini-drones, set to be in operation by 2015, being used to control our civil authorities, city councils, state legislators, governors, state officials, congressmen, senators, and federal department heads, U.S. judiciary, even the president, to forward global agendas. They control, you people make the, you design the laws for us, okay? You're our lawmakers. You're the ones who run this city, or at least help run it. If they control you, they control us. They don't need to have a little mini-drone for each one of us. All they have to have is one for you and your families. The resolution does not address any limitation of drone applications, only that FAA airspace use is being addressed. Once given the blessings of the city officials, there will be no way to stop the potential abuse of drone applications. It will be too late to undo that approval.
Thank you very much. And the cards that I have, which have your names on them, they will all be given to the city clerk as registered, so thank you.
My name is Dirk Tej, and I'd like to mention some of the Soviet countries and dictatorships around the world, and let's look at those countries, and did they allow their people to have any rights to privacy? Well, no, they didn't, because they were very jealous of their power, and they didn't want their people to be able to resist the power of those dictatorships, and that's what we're looking at with the drone issue, I think.
Thank you very much. Next. Morning.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Don Devine. I just want to speak out in opposition to this resolution as well, excuse me, as well. I have severe privacy issues with this. As Cindy Lake has already mentioned, the concerns with the violations of the Fourth Amendment. There's been drone technology that's been tested by the military in many different arenas along our borders and foreign nations. They are very effectively used, as we can see, at taking out enemy combatants as well as U.S. citizens abroad, as far as we know. My concern is that these might be used in that capacity here, and it has no place to violate our God-given rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? As I mentioned, doesn't preclude you from speaking later on, so, thank you all, hearing no one else, and seeing no one else. We will move on to item number 12. Business item for possible action. Any items City Council, staff, or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward, enacted upon at this time. Mayor Protem Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item, item number 32, Award of Contract Number 1, 30052BR, Deferred Compensation Services, Department of Human Resources. Award recommended International City Management Association Retirement Corporation, also known as ICMA RC. Staff has asked this be obeyed till May 1st, 2013, and that will be my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 13. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference at the regular City Council meeting of April 3rd, 2013. Motion to approve. Please, Councilman.
So moved.
Thank you, this motion, and please vote, and please post. And we will move on. Motion carries, and we will move on to items number 14 through 31. On the consent agenda, they're considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items council wishes to bring forward?
Mayor, can we pull forward 17, please?
Which one?
17.
17, okay. Anyone else? Item? Item? Okay, hearing none. Councilman, Mayor Protem.
I will make a motion to approve consent agenda items 14 through 31, except for 17.
Thank you. This is motion. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. And this is item 17. For possible action to approve a special event licensing agreement between the City of Las Vegas, Nevada BPO Elks, number 41468 Elks, and the City of Las Vegas City for the Helderado Days, PRCA Rodeo and Property owned by the city, bound by Stewart Avenue on the south, the alley between 7th and 8th Streets on the east, the alley between Las Vegas Boulevard and 6th Street on the west, and East Mesquite Avenue on the north. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Purpose and background, Elks has requested the use of the property owned by the city for Helderado again this year. The special event licensing agreement allows the use of the site by the Elks for the 33 days, which includes four days for the rodeo event, 17 days for site prep, and 12 days for site restoration. Staff recommends support of Helderado Days, PRCA Rodeo, to facilitate a community event. Community pride, continue. A great Las Vegas tradition. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Art, you're not necessary. I just wanted to bring this item forward to highlight that it's never too early to get your tickets for Helderado, beginning March, May 16th, 17th, 18th, and 19th, and of course, the Helderado Parade, Mayor and council members, I believe on the 18th. Is that correct, Esther? So I just wanted to bring that to the citizens of this city and get it in their minds today so they can buy their tickets early. Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
I can see Mrs. Carter is very appreciative of that. And is it all right with you, Councilman Barlow, since, Mayor, since Councilman Ross? Or do you want to make the motion to approve?
Yes, move approved.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Barlow made a motion to approve. Please vote the motion.
And Mayor, council members, we're trying to get Councilman Barlow to do the bull riding this year. So a little help from the public.
Well, to know what you're sheep throwing. You're going to do sheep throwing. Would you please post?
Mayor?
Yes.
With all due respect, Councilman Barlow deals with a lot of bulls, so no bulls for me.
Oh, so wrong. Woo-hoo. Thank you. That motion passes. We will now move on. It's still going, Councilman.
I just wanted to briefly thank you for not sitting me in between Councilman Barlow and Ron.
Oh, we all get that, too. Okay, and we have obeyed item number 32. What was the date on that? May 1st. So we'll move on to item number 33. Discussion for possible action regarding an estimated allocation of $4,96,017 in fiscal year 2013-2014, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funds to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. This affects all wards. Mr. Harson, good morning.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I ask you to also include items 34 and 35, and we'll do it all together?
Okay, we will read that as well. Item 34, discussion for possible action regarding an estimated allocation of $381,054 fiscal year 2013-2014, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG funds to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD, that's all wards. And item number 35. Discussion for possible action regarding an estimated allocation of $1,66,263 fiscal year 2013-14, and an additional $84,484.70 for fiscal year 2012 to 2013, for a total of $1,150,747.70 in housing opportunities for persons with AIDS, HOPWA grant funds to the City of Las Vegas by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, all wards.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Steve Harson. I'm the Director of Parks, Rec, and Neighborhood Services. These three agenda items are allocating federal funds to our community nonprofit partners who provide public services based on the CDRB recommendations. CDRB is a 13-member appointment board by the council to represent the community and advising the council how to allocate these funds. Each member committed over 24 hours of their personal time during the day. Over 312 hours were spent combined reviewing these applications and hearing presentations to make their recommendations. The recommendations being presented today represent three different funding programs. That's CDBG, Community Development Block Grant, ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, and HOPWA, which is Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. I have with me today the Chair and Co-Chair, Carmen LaShawn Miller, and Roxanne McCoy, who will be giving their recommendations before you.
Thank you, Stephen. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Carmen LaShawn Miller, Chair of the Community Development Recommending Board. Before we go into the grant awards, we want to echo the importance of these grants to our community. The $2 million in leveraged funds is quite impressive to the $2,85,638 allocation that we are recommending for the three federal funding sources. We ask the agencies every year to identify other funding sources and form partnerships and alliances in order to leverage their programs and services. It is important that agencies not rely solely on one funding source. As you can see, they listened. I would like to thank the city council for their guidance to the CDRB and helping us to do this work, and that supports the city's priorities for seniors, youth, special needs, and homeless. The CDRB stayed within the guidelines you set and hopefully met with your approval. Of all three funding sources, the hardest grant where the committee spends the most time is CDBG, Public Service. With so much need in our community, we cannot fund every agency, and in most cases, they receive partial funding. Federal regulations limit the city to allocating only 15% of its Community Development Block Grant funds to public service projects. The board reviewed 28 CDBG public service applications from local nonprofit agencies requesting a total of $1,823,638. The total funding available was $614,403, which includes a projected 1% federal budget reduction. All applicants for each program were asked to prioritize their funding needs and to assist the board in allocating such limited forms of funding. In keeping the council's priorities of the 28 CDBG public service applications, the board recommended funding for nine homeless programs, three senior programs, three special needs programs, and nine youth programs, in a total of $614,403, as listed in the agenda memo. Now I'd like to introduce my colleague, Ms. Roxanne McCoy, this year's co-chair, to summarize the remaining recommendations.
Madam Mayor and Council. The city anticipates receiving...
And would you repeat your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Madam Council, I mean, Madam Mayor and Council, Roxanne McCoy. The city anticipates receiving $352,475 in Emergency Solutions Grant funds, which includes funding for administration. The board reviewed four ESG applications requesting a total of $538,234, and recommended funding for all four of the ESG applications in the amount of $341,341, as listed in the agenda memo. This funding will provide services to address the needs of homeless people, emergency shelter, rapid rehousing, rental assistance, community outreach, and homeless prevention services. The HOPWA program, the city designated the recipient of the Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS funds for all of Clark County, Nevada. The board reviewed five HOPWA applications requesting a total of $1,367,684, which includes funding for administration. The board recommended funding for all five of the HOPWA applications in the total amount of $1,118,760, as listed in the agenda memo. This funding will provide services to address the needs of persons affected by HIV/AIDS, including rental assistance, permanent affordable housing, case management, and emergency services. Carmen will ask the board members in attendance to stand.
We have a very exciting board that I'd like to recognize. I'd like to ask Mr. Guerrero, who I believe is one of our board members that's here, to stand, and any other board members that are here. That would be Tony Guerrero, Devender Pappas, Audrey Aslan, A.J. Powell, Rodney Jordan, Ms. McCoy, Roxanne McCoy, Mike Aker, and Pam Hartley, who all actively participated, board members, and were very grateful for their services. I'd also like to thank the city staff for our meetings, and particularly our attorney, Terry Ponticello, and the deputy city clerk, Angela Crowley, and of course, our staff that answers all of our questions and is there in a pinch, and that would be Sean Bolster and Tammy Christensen from the city, and of course, our deputy director, Dr. Lisa Morris, who is here. And in addition, I'm not sure, but some of the agencies that we work with, they may be in the audience, I don't know if they want to come forward and speak, that have been working with us and may have received money for application. I see someone coming. I'd like to invite them, make a comment, and then we'll close with any question she may have.
Thank you very much. And if you, good morning.
Mayor Goodman, good morning. City Council, I'm Elliot Karp. I'm the President of the Jewish Federation of Las Vegas, one of the beneficiaries. Having sat for the council meeting since its beginning, I think one of the things that makes our city great and makes our nation great is community service philanthropy, compassion, and care. And this committee of the city, and your staff, and each and every one of you are committed to those values. I can speak on behalf of our organization, Las Vegas Senior Lifeline, which is one of the beneficiaries, as well as all the others. If not for the support that we receive from the city council, we wouldn't be able to care for all the individuals that we are entrusted to provide compassionate care for, not just as groups, as anonymous groups, but really, literally, quite meaningfully, on an each-and-every-day basis, one person at a time. It makes a world of difference, and I thank you.
Thank you very much. Please come forward, state your name.
Good morning. Marlene Richter, Executive Director of the Shade Tree Shelter for Women, Children, and Their Pets. What a process to go through this year, and with an amazing committee. It's no secret that the call for services has been unprecedented. And as we look forward to the fiscal year ahead, even though the funds were so restricted and there were so many applications, what a great job this committee did in selecting a way for those of us that were serving our community to continue in some way to still serve and to get the message out that the need is great, and the citizens of Las Vegas are in good hands with this committee and with our mayor and council standing with us. So thank you so much for the support from the past and looking forward to the future.
Great, thank you. The need grows every day.
Hi, I'm Christina Bailey. I'm the Director of Development with Brotherboard Nevada. And we're very excited to be a long-term partner with the City of Las Vegas in the CDBG grants. We've been, we've received funds for the last 10 years, and you guys were one of our original funders. We started with just a couple of schools. We're now up to 10 in the City of Las Vegas and 28 in Clark County. So we're really excited. It allows us to give out 30,000 books each month and change the lives of many children in our community. So thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
If you have any questions, we'll address them at this time.
Okay, do you want to...
I don't have a question. I have a statement. You guys are awesome. Thank you for what you do, all of you, who were part of this and have contributed to this. Director Harson, you've got a great team, on staff and off staff. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Protem?
Okay, we'll go ahead and do these one at a time. I'll make a motion to approve item number 33.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Before the motion, I just wanted to really just thank the entire committee, the CDBG committee, as well as Sean Bolster, and of course, Steve Harson, your entire team, for really pulling this together each and every year. The monies that are expensed and provided to all the wonderful organizations that apply really go a long way. And looking at the list every year, and we all can contest this, with budgets shrinking the demand increase. And so therefore, we continue to have more requests than we have money to offer. And it's very difficult for the volunteer board members to sit back and digest and really consume all of the information that's being provided for them, trying to determine whether or not they're going to partial fund, or no funding at all, or fully fund specific programs. And my hat goes off specifically to the Chair and the Vice Chair and all of the members of the CDBG board, because I know you all have a very tough job. And looking at all of the programs that are warranted, however not having enough funding resources to provide them with their requests, is difficult. And specifically for the nonprofits that come in and apply, they really need that fully funding. You know, they really need to be fully funded. And I know they'll take what they can get, but at the same time, they must go back out and try to figure out how to balance that portion that they still need in order to run the great programs that the community continues to pull on them. You know, and all of the, you know, resources that they have are limited as well. And so I just really hope and wish that we can continue to receive these federal dollars in order that the rubber meets the road. And this is exactly, you know, where that term comes from, as far as the monies that we pass through to the local nonprofits. I mean, it really go a long way, and it really impacts the neighborhoods as well as the community in such a great way, specifically with the great need that our community unfortunately is in right now. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for a wonderful job. And I support your efforts in this motion. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
And thank you for the report, Mr. Harson, that you sent around showing the decline in funding that's available and has been coming less and less each year with the reduction, and looking forward to future reductions. It is incredible. So Mayor Protem, please. You have, a motion has been made to accept. So please, on item number 33, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Moving along.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 34.
There's a motion, please vote, and please post. That motion carries. Item 35.
Thank you, Mayor. And Tony, thanks for coming down and thanks for representing Ward 4. I appreciate it. I will now make a motion to approve item number 35.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve. Please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Great job.
Thank you.
Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you for coming down. We're going to pull forward item number 38, because those who take care of us have to go back to work. So if you will turn to item number 38, this is R172013 in advance. Discussion for possible action regarding a resolution and general supportive efforts by the state in Nevada to be selected for one of the six national test ranges for unmanned aircraft systems. This is in regard to all wards. And so, Mr. Art.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Members of council, for the record, Bill Arnt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me is a team of aviation experts, and they're going to speak briefly and answer technical questions. But I wanted to kind of try to guide the conversation into what specifically you're being asked to vote on with the resolution today. So in introducing the item, I'd like to mention that this opportunity is issued by the Federal Aviation Administration. It was announced to the aviation community on February 14th of this year, and it was announced by the FAA Administrator, Michael Huerta. And I just wanted to read briefly in that letter to the aviation community what the purpose of this is. So Mr. Huerta writes, "In the FAA Modernization and Reform Act of 2012, Congress directed the FAA to take a series of initiatives to help introduce UAS, that's Unmanned Aircraft Systems, into the national airspace system over the next five years. They included providing six test sites to address research and development and operational issues. The screening information request starts the process of establishing the six test sites. UAS are one of the most dynamic growth sectors of the aerospace industry. According to industry forecasts, the potential market growth for government and commercial unmanned aircraft systems could generate nearly $90 billion in worldwide economic activity in the next decade." And then, so this really is an opportunity that's been announced by the Federal Aviation Administration. Administration. There are specific dates that communities have to respond to this request. Again, it was announced on February 14th, and then the final application is due May 6th, so that is, hopefully provides some context why this group is before you today. They are working in close concert with the Governor's Office of Economic Development and have approached the communities around the state to support this effort. So, I wanted to explain that this is really devoted to introducing the unmanned aircraft systems to commercial airspace, and it's really focusing on commercial applications of unmanned aircraft systems. I'm not an aviation expert, never flown an aircraft, so that's why these gentlemen are here today to talk about their support of the state's efforts in applying for making Nevada one of those six designated test sites. So, with that, I'd like to introduce it to the team and turn it over to the team.
And before you do that, could I ask, was this open nationwide, or only to states that had air force bases? What was this open to, to be one of the six?
It, I'll let the, I'll let the, the team that is leading the, our state's application answer that directly, but it has been an open application to communities around the country. And we obviously have a very, a big aviation presence here in Nevada, given what we have here in Nevada and our assets that we have. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to the team.
Thank you.
Mayor and Councilman, my name is Joe Brown, and I am not an aviation expert, but I am one of 15 members of a statewide panel, which the governor appointed approximately a year ago to respond on behalf of the state. With me is Colonel James Flights from Nellis Air Force Base and Crete Air Force Base. He is the aviation expert. Also with him are two other experts, John Daniels from the UNLV Harry Reid Center, and Ken Witcher, who is another member of the 15, of the panel, the governor's panel, and Ken is with Embry-Riddle, who, a company that does training of people in aviation. I'm going to dispense with further comments myself and introduce Colonel Flights to you. He is the expert on this.
Good morning.
Mayor Goodman, ma'am, thank you for hearing us today. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, thanks.
Thank you, and be sure to say your name too, please.
Lieutenant Colonel James Flights, Nevada Air National Guardsman, and I've been in the state of Nevada for 10 years, like others have said. I absolutely love Nevada, I love Las Vegas. One of the things that strikes me today as we're here is also applaud you and applaud everyone in the room, because this is the democratic process, and love to see that here today. As far as the FAA test site effort, to answer your question, ma'am, yes, all the, this was open to all the states. There's currently 37 states that are applying and a total of 50 applicants. Some of the states, the way they've broken out their effort, they're, they have multiple applicants within their state, but most of the states have gone the route of Nevada, where it's a state-led effort, and the state's actually applying for an FAA test site.
And may I interrupt you, and I'm sorry, but obviously, it's extremely intense situation here. Six of the 37 states that have been selected thus far, six will be chosen. Six will be chosen.
Yes, ma'am, and so, just for a point of clarification, there's going to be, there's 50 applicants that have already identified themselves. We'll see on May 6th if that changes any, but currently, there's 50 applicants. 37 of those applicants are currently state-led efforts, as ours is, and six of the 50 applicants will be selected to be an FAA test site. And just so we're clear, New Mexico has already been grandfathered in, because they've already been working with the FAA on this effort for a long time, so when it's all said and done, there'll actually be seven Federal Aviation Administration test sites.
But to repeat, you said will. Six more will be chosen.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you.
Six more. Within that, another thing I would say is, we'll work and continue to work to get the word out and better explain this initiative. The thing I'll tell you is that you hear a lot of different things, what it is and what isn't, and I'll tell you exactly what it is. It's for the safe integration of unmanned aircraft systems, RPAs, remotely piloted aircraft, and drones, whatever name you'd like to put on them. It is the safe integration of those assets into the Federal Aviation Administration airspace. The national airspace system is, is, this effort is designed to have those aircraft fly in that system safely.
Mayor, may we ask questions as we go, just so that I can follow?
You know, I think it would really be helpful as, as something comes up and comes to mind, that we go ahead and interject briefly while we can. Thank you.
Just so that I can follow you, because right now, I'm good right now, it's just so that I can follow you. So, currently, no aircraft can fly within the FAA, the federal, what is it, Federal Aviation?
Federal Aviation Administration is the organization running the program.
Okay.
But the airspace that we're talking about as defined, is defined as the NAS, National Airspace System.
Right.
So, the Federal Aviation Administration is setting up test sites to do test work to safely integrate unmanned aircraft into the national airspace.
In the N A A?
Correct.
N A S?
N A S, correct.
Okay. Because currently, no other aircraft can fly within the NAS.
Okay, so, not entirely true.
Okay.
There's always a but, right?
Okay.
So, currently, what you cannot do with an unmanned aircraft is nobody. It doesn't matter if it's the Department of Defense, or it doesn't matter if it's civil applications, or commercial industry, or anybody. Nobody can go down to their local airport, fill out a flight plan, and go and take off an unmanned aircraft and just fly it as you would a manned aircraft.
Okay.
You can apply for a certificate of authorization, so, COA is what we call them, and to get special permission today to fly in that airspace. When you do that, it's very, very restrictive. So, it says exactly the route you're going to fly, it says exactly the purpose you're going to fly, they take anywhere from six months to two years to be approved, and then that is the only purpose that you can fly in the nation's airspace for, and each COA is specific to that type aircraft. So, you can't go and do this broad COA, we want to do these kind of things, and do it with a bunch of assets. You can literally say, "This MQ-1 Predator would like to take off from the Nellis Test and Training Range, this exact GPS coordinate, and fly this exact route at this exact altitude, go into this exact location, do what it's going to do, and then come home via the exact route and recover in that exact thing." And within that, currently, you have to say, you have to have a termination point, so you've got to say exactly if there is a risk that's going to be realized where that aircraft might go. If you're going to have a lost link scenario, that is where you lose link with the aircraft, you have to have orbits established and procedures established, and that's the type of stuff that takes so long. So, within the nation, I'll tell you, there's probably, I don't know this for fact, but, you know, Nellis is the, a location that has over a million flight hours with MQ-1, MQ-9, you know, Reapers, Predators, and RQ-170s, and I think within our, our complex and our, our knowledge, we probably own about 10 of those certificates of authorization. So, we're talking about a very limited number. So, this effort is to take it from that kind of a limited, really restricted, almost can't do it, to general aviation, safely integrating. So, you know, the, the holy grail of this effort would be that, at some point, you can go and go down to an airport, file your flight plan, and safely go and fly one of these aircraft. Now, within this effort, the thing that's important to understand is, the role of the test sites is to write the regulations for restriction. The other part of the test site is to write the class of aircraft. The other piece is to award the type certificate to the men and women that would be controlling such aircraft. So, what, what's that mean? It means that, as a pilot today, you know, I currently fly C-130s in the National Guard, flown many others, so I got over 4,000 hours in that area, and when you're talking about flying today, you, you go out, and I have to file a certain type flight plan, I have to tell them the class of the aircraft, and then to do that, I have to be a certain type pilot with skills maintaining a certain level of currency, and that's what they allow to make that a safe flight. In the unmanned aircraft, when this is done, it'll be the exact same thing. On that flight plan, you will tell them what class of aircraft you're going to fly, small, medium, heavy, jumbo, large, you know, that type, type thing. You'll say where you're going, but you'll also say what type certificates you have, so that you're allowed, thank you, so that you're allowed to safely fly and do what you're scheduling to do. So, as a result of that, a lot of the concerns you hear, a lot of the, the stuff that you might hear is already going on, because this hasn't been regulated yet, I mean, that's one of the reasons, the real thrust of this, is that the technology got ahead of some of the procedures. So, that's why the FAA was directed to figure this out and do this safely. So, what's going to come out of that is, a lot of these concerns are going to be regulated. We're going to write the procedures and the rules and regulations, so that we can safely bring this technology to bear, and, and do it appropriately. And that's, that's really the crux of the effort. I will say that, you know, it's a five-year effort, is as it stands today, and the early on parts of this effort will be very controlled. It's a, it's a requirement that these test sites have submitted these certificates of authorizations for the type aircraft they would fly. It's a requirement that we use unrestricted, or restricted, special use type airspace. That's airspace where you don't have homes, you don't have civilians. The, all the corridors that connect this airspace together is, you know, I designed a lot of them, to be honest with you, and worked with the folks that are experts to do that, and one of the requirements was that we weren't flying over towns and cities and people's homes, to the best of our ability. We did all of that over, quite honestly, BLM land, so that as we write up termination points and as we write agreements, it's land that the state controls and isn't personally owned. Yes, ma'am?
If I may, you said you, you will file, a human being will file a flight pattern, but I thought these were unmanned. Are they both kinds? You get in a technologically directed flight, but there is also the unmanned one?
Okay, so, that's a good question, ma'am. So, when you say RPA, that stands for remotely piloted aircraft. So, what that means is, I'm not sitting in the airplane, but I am remotely flying that airplane. I am physically, when it turns left, it's because I'm manipulating the flight controls to do it, or the autopilot system. Unmanned aircraft systems could mean multiple types. It could mean a remotely piloted aircraft, where an actual person is in the loop flying that airplane, or it could also mean that it's on an, it's an autonomous type aircraft, where before it takes off, you pre-plan its route, you put, you know, you basically file the flight plan, and then within the aircraft, you file the same flight plan, so effectively, you're doing the exact same thing it would be if you were flying it, you're telling them where it's going to be, when it's going to be there. That's effectively what the flight plan does, what altitude you're going to go, who you're going to be talking to, whose centers you're going through. And so, some of these would talk, take off, if it's a UAS, Unmanned Aircraft System, that, you know, implies that a pilot's not physically flying it, it's something he programmed. However, once again, out of the regulations will be written, so I don't want to put the cart before the horse, however, I'm quite certain, the individual that's writing that flight plan and filing that flight plan and putting it into the aircraft will be signing up, just like I do today, for the responsibility of that aircraft and the safe integration. And we'll be writing those laws to say how that happens.
But that does not preclude some other technological force from intercepting, or does it? Is that what you're exploring? How that something that's already been sent can't be intercepted?
Yes, ma'am. So, one of the things, that's why we call them FAA test sites, if you, one of the, the areas is security. So, both from a links security, also from a communication security, and there's a lot of different protocols in place, and what you'll find is, because we haven't done this yet and regulated it yet, there's a various number of those type protocols. What will happen is, the test sites will, you know, verify and validate what is the appropriate protocols, and then industry will have to develop to those, and, and that's what we'll be getting a handle on.
Thanks, Colonel. A couple of questions for you. You doing okay?
I'm good.
Okay, good. All right, so, this technology, the drones or UAS, is it, is it pretty safe to say that this type of an aircraft, this type of technology is going to occur, is going to continue to occur, it's going to grow, whether it's with the government sector or with the private sector? These aircraft are not going away, is that correct?
It's transformational, is my belief. In other words, no, there's absolutely no chance of this going away.
Okay, and, and what's going to happen is, there's going to be an integration with these unmanned aircraft and manned aircraft. They are going to integrate with each other, so the purpose of this, this, this test is to ensure that they safely integrate with each other, so we don't have them crashing into each other. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. And, you know, that integration you're talking about does happen, you know, within the Department of Defense today already, but this is, like we've all said, this is a private, civil effort, and within that effort, exactly right, sir, this is how we're going to test and do that. Sense and avoid type technology, frequency, bandwidth management, all those type things are going to be worked to ensure that we can safely integrate, and those protocols will be written via this effort.
Are you going to be testing surveillance cameras, surveillance capabilities? Are you going to be doing any of that? Are you going to be, are you going to be writing the Fourth Amendment issues during this testing process? Is that part of the test?
The, the privacy rights type work will without question be part of the effort. I mean, the Federal Aviation Administration, as they regulate things, they've regulated stuff for a long time, so, so those type issues will be addressed. I would say that, once the work has been finished, that would be a great time for the council to take a look at that and make sure that they addressed everything that we, we care about, and that they did a good job. That, that's just my, my thoughts as assistant. The, the, what was the second part of the question? I'm sorry, I'm just going to make it.
I'm just wondering, you're, you're going to be just testing the integration of these two aircraft?
All right, so the sensors, I, I got you.
Are, are you actually going to be testing, you know, surveillance capabilities?
So, when you say surveillance, you know, that, that implies I'm going somewhere and I'm looking and, and, you know, collection, data collection.
Are you doing any of that?
In that type sensor, no. But somebody in the same vein could go, Colonel Flights, if there's a sensor off the nose of the airplane to detect another airplane coming at it, that's a sensor. So, I don't want to say, you know, I want to be careful, I want to wordsmith it. In other words, sensors will be tested that are required for the safe integration of these assets into the national airspace system, but from a ISR, you know, search and reconnaissance type testing that, that I suspect is the crux of the privacy thoughts, no. This is not to develop sensors so that I can, you know, see exactly who you are, what you are, and what you're doing on the ground. It's about flying safely in the airspace.
Okay, so, so that, that's very clear. That part will not be
Very clear.
Part of the testing. And you're, so, when it comes to, when it comes to actually granting the six locations, somebody's going to get this, one of the six locations, right? Those six locations are going to be granted, and what we're looking at is having Nevada be part of one of those grants, because we can be part of the testing process, it'll create jobs, have an impact on the economy, if that does happen. Is that true?
That is correct, sir, and the way I would say it is, the way, the way I like to say it is, my mom rides on commercial airplanes too, and so, Nevada is the center of excellence. We have over a million flight hours on the Nellis Test and Training Range since 1994. The companies that have come up and have the, led the nation in the emergence of this technology have hired Nevadans, men and women, those countries, those companies are located here. We are the absolute right state and the right people to get this done correctly for the nation. I would suspect that if we're selected as a test site, Nevada would lead the, the other six test sites, quite honestly, or the seven test sites, in the development of this technology safely and integrating it into the national airspace system. Absolutely believe it.
And with your permission, Mayor, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Could I just ask you a question?
Yes.
Good. So, it's my understanding, the governor has put together a statewide panel of individuals which you are a member of, in order to go around Nevada and receive some kind of resolution or approval from local governments to support this?
Well, our primary, our primary purpose for the creation of the panel was to respond and prepare the response for the, for the, they call it an S I R, it's like an RFP.
Oh, and then, and you, you would like to have the City of Las Vegas resolution as part of that package?
Yes, some others of the state, you know, this is highly competitive, as the Colonel has said. There are 50 applications for six spots. There are 50 applications for six spots because of the tremendous amount of money involved in this. It's in billions of dollars for each, each state, each of the six awarded sites and thousands of jobs. Because of that, it's so intensely competitive, we, some of the states have taken themselves out of running or have hurt their chances by having laws passed anti, you know, privacy at laws. Because Nevada has a unique characteristic that very few states enjoy, we have all that wide open space without any homes, without any inhabitants, so the, the danger of unauthorized spying, what if you want to call it, in the extreme, it's, it's minimal in Nevada. There's, it's not going to be flying here, it's going to be flying in the same place where the F-16s and F-15s and all the, you know, this, that, the restricted airspace that we have right now, all those wide open spaces in the center of the state.
Just so I can hear from you too, that this is kind of the big crux of it, this has nothing to do with privacy issues?
Absolutely nothing, and they will not be flying in the, in her inhabited areas of Nevada. They won't be anywhere near Las Vegas.
This is only to test the integration of unmanned and manned aircraft. That's all we're doing here, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to, and I know Councilman Beers, Councilman Coffin too, but just, you know, hearing the concerns, which I know since you've both been involved with this for quite some time, I know the concerns that we heard from the public today in their brief comments. I think each of us as an individual have the same concerns, and we don't, or we are hopefully not looking into a bad Christmas future, where those who are illegal because they can access everything that you will be doing or that, that is being awarded, we know that possibly is coming. So it's not a runaway issue without the controls put in. Realizing too, that New Mexico has already been selected or grandfathered in, knowing that adjoining states could be having these unmanned aircraft flying into our area as well. Concern with the civil liberties and the Fourth Amendment for all of us, we don't want a big brother. This is not at this point, it doesn't mean that it could not be usurped, and that is a concern, just as an individual citizen, because I know of the FBI's ability to go ahead and listen in, into homes with the wonderful technology they have, that I think that's what our concern is. But other countries are already involved doing this, not, do we know that other countries are already testing and doing? Yes.
There are many, many countries that have this equipment that they are developing.
Okay, the, one of the questions that came forth, because of the high level of intricacy of the technology, is what do you see at this point about awarding local contracts? Or is this all going to be imported contracts and all FAA work, or are we able to use our own employees and contractors?
Ma'am, it's a university-led effort, is how the governor set this up in the state. So UNR, UNLV, Embry-Riddle, CSN, we're working with them to develop both minor, bachelor's and master's degree in aeronautical engineering with a focus in RPAs. We're trying to take the vocational high schools and give them the appropriate tool and die and the material skills, because we're trying to attract the manufacturing of these assets to this state. We're Henderson Executive Airport tomorrow, and Northrup's hosting a hiring seminar where they're probably going to hire about 100 folks into this type technologies. So if you're a software engineer, or you're a young individual that wants to become a pilot, or you're somebody that wants to do manufacturing on aircraft, this is absolutely going to happen in this state to people in the state hired by folks in this state.
But currently, we do not build aircraft here. Are these unmanned pieces going? Is there an opportunity for us to have contracts awarded where our people will be able to build?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. They're, I'm giving just one example. L-3 Com's working to test one of these aircraft, possibly at Walker Lake. It's a Navy development. If that, if they get the contract, so they haven't gotten that yet, but if they get the contract, they have already been working with us for looking for a manufacturing opportunity in Reno, where they would, they think they'd hire anywhere from 100, 125 folks to build 3,000 of these a year for the next 10 years. That's the contract they're going after. If they get that and we can help them secure that, I'm very confident that that manufacturing will happen in Reno, knowing who runs that company.
So there's sort of a sense here that, or I sort of feel, I should speak only for myself, it's totally really beyond our control at this point. Because in, in a sense, I want to lend support for us to be part of, as the testing phase, something that's going to go somewhere else in this country, if not here. It's a, it's a done conclusion. It will happen, it's going to happen because of Nellis and Creech and because of the sophistication of what we have. It is going to happen, it could be in Arizona, it could be in Colorado, it could be in Utah, it could be one, certainly California because of the sophistication of what they have. So the question for us then is, having the faith that none of this will happen, that I've learned through life that, you know, you have to deal with what is. And so the question is, do we want the neighboring states already to have been selected and we sit here without the economic benefit, but knowing to the best of the ability of the entire process of this, our privacy is going to be maintained?
Yes, if I can, I want to address the civil liberties and the privacy issues on this. I came here as a young lawyer in 1968, and just at that time, the, the Congress passed a law called the Omnibus Crime Act, and that permitted wiretapping. It gave federal investigators almost unbridled rights to wiretap people, and there were questions about its invasion of civil liberties. And a young lawyer named Oscar Goodman made a terrific reputation and a career out of defending people against unauthorized wiretaps. And there, as long as there is a democracy and there are lawyers and people, the democratic process, I don't think we need to be concerned about the, some of the concerns expressed here today.
Thank you very much. Councilman Beers, you're next up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I respectfully disagree with, with Mr. Brown. I, I am very deeply concerned. But, but let me be clear, but let me be clear. My concern is this 3D robotics company here that I've called up on the web, which for less than a thousand bucks will sell me a quadricopter with four blades and a high-definition camera. That will allow me to float that over my house, hit a button, and it will just sit there until the battery runs out. I do not have to direct it, or, it's got an onboard computer with a geospatial sensor, it determines whether or not it's level or not, and if it feels that it's a little unlevel on that corner, whoop, we kick that blade up, we get leveled again, and we freeze in space, and I can take all the pictures of my neighbors that I want. It's got nothing to do, it's got nothing to do with the United States military, it's got nothing to do with the Federal Aviation Administration, it's got nothing to do with the city of Las Vegas. In fact, I'm afraid it has nothing to do with anything, and that I can in fact do that, and I'm not breaking any regulation, and, and I'm kind of curious how this effort thinks it's going to address that problem, which to me is the central problem. This technology is now becoming ubiquitous, it is cheap, it is easy, it is available to any citizen, well-meaning or not.
So, so, sir, we, we said we're going to, part of the FAA responsibility is to set class of aircraft and, and regulate it. So right now, you're talking about something that's absolutely just not regulated, so that can happen, it already happens. It, I, I, let me, let me say, it happens. But if we're going to do this right, which we said we're gonna, and we're going to have a voice, and we're going to listen to the folks, that class of aircraft, there is a lot of talk about, so I, we can't say, yeah, we have to do the test sites, we've got to do the work, add, collect the data, but there's a lot of talk about regulating that exact thing. Talking about to fly that helicopter, that you're going to have to have a, because they fly on a frequency, and you're going to have to obtain a frequency license, and that you're going to have to, you know, let folks know when that frequency is being used and where it's being used. There's different classes of airspace currently, and out of this effort, they expect there to, can you, continue to possibly be even new classes airspace. You can't say definitely because you have to do the test work, and you have to do the analysis for the federal government to look at it and then come up with what those restrictions are. But as of right now, there's no restriction, and it's just like you said, it has nothing to do with the FAA, has nothing to do with the DOD or anything else, the technology is pervasive. But this is the effort that can get control of that kind of technology and regulate it so that we do protect people's privacy rights. The, the effort isn't about spying or doing those things, but you, we have to at least give the FAA, who regulates the nation's airspace, that's their charter, and their charter of safe integration, we have to give them the opportunity to do their work, then we'll all review their work as private citizens and decide if we like what comes out of it, and if we have to make any additional amendments or, or any restrictions at that point, by all means, we all should be part of that. I, I'm a private citizen too, I, I like my privacy also.
Councilman Beers, I absolutely agree with you, 100%, but the reality is it's coming, and it's coming to our surrounding states, and it's here. And so, I mean, those are points that, that's where the world has evolved to at this point in our lives, it's very sad. And when you look at things that just happened, you know, it's coming, and is it going to be everywhere else? Or are we going to have our piece here? It's there, it is there in your coffee cup. It is here, it is here. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I made some joking references when we first heard this presentation about, well, kind of semi-serious, if somebody flies over my backyard and doesn't have a warrant, I'll shoot it down, something. Of course, then I'd get in trouble for discharging a weapon inside a populated area, and I'd be going to jail. So I won't do that, unless it may be a BB gun, Your Honor. But in the meantime, being serious, we really have to be serious about this. It is here. People have been flying these drones for a long time, the larger ones, and I'm sure the smaller ones, under the control of intelligence agencies, are out there being tested now in many, many places. We, we know that to be true. So what we have to do is what we've always done when we had technology. We had, as I think Mr. Brown mentioned, 45 years ago, the passage of the Omnibus Crime Bill, and in fact, I don't think in Nevada we still allow, we do not allow third-party wiretaps. We still have maintained, at least for local law enforcement, the, the, it is not legal to have an unauthorized third-party wiretap. So there are things that you do, and you meet these challenges as they come. We will meet challenges as we come, but technology is here and will always advance. Today's still a day for snooping if you want to, for mischievous, for pranking, or for, for illicit purposes. I can put a baby monitor in my neighbor's house and listen to the other, other side of the, you know, the other half of the baby monitor in my own house. I mean, I could do that, and the airplanes that you can buy from Radio Shack and lord knows where else, they can fly, take pictures, right now. There's no regulation. I don't think the FAA regulates below a certain level of, of altitude, that becomes more of a state or a local issue. So there will have to be a layer of law built upon, a layer of law will be coming on this based upon judicial decisions and statutory law. So we're going to get our hands around this. So the testing is going to go on, and I, I have no objection to the testing, I do not at this point, because it's very important to integrate with civil aviation. But we know what's coming, and so we have to be vigilant and make sure that our Fourth Amendment rights are not trampled on. And that's the Search and Seizure Amendment, as commonly known. There's another article, and this is the Constitution, Article 3 of the US Constitution, relating to our independent judiciary, our federal judiciary. It becomes even more important now then for our independent judiciary to maintain its arms-length distance and its, its watch over the executive branch. Because in that way, you see the ultimate appeals, the ultimate decisions that are made at the local level work their way through these federal courts. A body of law will be created there if we see abuses. It's hard to, it's hard to have judicial remedy when you haven't seen an abuse, so you can preemptively pass certain statutes, but until really an abuse has occurred, you can't really tell, and therefore you need to have judicial review. Thirdly, you've got local law enforcement, you have a hammer on the local law enforcement because our local law enforcement is elected, they're led, led by an elected official who can be held accountable should his or her troops exceed the boundaries. That I think, frankly, in Nevada, since we elect our judges, I think every judge, every candidate for sheriff, everybody who's appointed a chief of a police force should be asked about these kinds of things. Do you intend to? Do you intend to use certain kinds of surveillance? And if so, you have to pledge to make sure you always have a warrant, because you will, of course, obviously blow your case, but there you go. You see, there has to be a connection, and we will build a, I'm sure, a solid body of law on how to maintain these things in terms of the potential violations of the Fourth Amendment. That I, I gotta believe it's coming, because we, it, 53, 50, 43 years, we're living, longer 45 years, we're living with the Omnibus Crime Bill here in Nevada. Many states had something much more severe way before that. So I think we'll, we'll integrate them, and I think we'll make them safe, and I think there can be a wonderful boon to our economy. And by the way, I think the fact that you could send a drone in and take live pictures of a hotspot in a, in a fire in our forests out here in the West, they're burning up badly, and localize your hotspot so that you can then guide a manned tanker in to drop its fuel, its anti, the anti-fire, the coating that they put on the brush and the trees to help retard the fire. Those kinds of things are critical. We, we lose a lot of people every fire season due to death by these brave men and women who fly these aging tankers. So I, that's the first force use I see. You don't even have to test that much more right now, you can get into national parks and our BLM land, and you can go there. And I really urge you to do that, the first time you can. We've got the toys out there at Creech right now that can do the very same thing.
We did a ghostwriter exercise, sir, April 2nd, for that exact thing that you just described.
There you are, thank you very much.
The exact thing.
No, Colonel, I, I just want to say to you and to my colleagues on the council, and to those people who are outside, believe me, I do understand exactly, having lived my entire life in Nevada, I understand. These are things that are very near and dear to all of us, but your independent judiciary and the civilian control of your law enforcement are the key to maintaining your privacy. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I would like to speak to you from an economic development standpoint, and specifically words that the FAA Administrator Michael Warta wrote, and he stated in a letter submitted to the members of the aviation community, and I'll just read a portion of his letter. He says, "According to industry forecasts, the potential market growth for government and commercial UAA, UAS could generate nearly $90 million in worldwide economic activity in the next decade. Please help me understand where that number is coming from and how impactful, how true that will be to the impact of the economic development overall." And I'm, I'm pretty sure that's from a global standpoint versus a local standpoint.
You know, I've, I've seen so many different projections, to, to be honest with you, and there was a time, sir, when, when I used to try to chase down each one and that, so when you, you know, so I gotta be honest, I, I don't know, I guess we'd have to ask the director where he got his numbers, and I see different, different ones all the time. I, I know that Nellis does an economic impact study, and I know the numbers change some, but I know it's somewhere in the $5 billion to the local economy when you talk about everyone buying homes and all those, all those kind of efforts.
Well, that's, let me just cut you off, and I'm, I'm going to try to be more specific. I need you to break this down, not only for me, but for those that may not understand as well.
John Daniels has some information here that I think will be helpful to you, Councilman.
Again, Jonathan Daniels, Harry Rees, at UNLV. Sir, to address the, address your question, in the year and a half since then-acting Administrator Warta started developing this, and then issued a statement here in February, the layer you're reading from, we've actually had several parallel and building studies as well. The most recent one that the governor's Office of Economic Development's been using is from the Association of Unmanned Vehicle Systems International, and what that was released last month, and that talks, the first three years of, of integration, 70,000 jobs within the US alone, and $13.6 billion.
Okay, let's just stop there just for a moment, because I want to break this down a little bit. Where, how? I'm not understanding as far as the, the bigger picture. I'm not understanding as far as the bigger picture. I guess I'm missing something as far as where that number is coming from, where the jobs come from, what jobs are being created?
Well, one of my favorite examples, sir, is that we talk unmanned, but as Colonel Fleiss points out, they're really remotely piloted.
Okay.
And it's not a robot flying in the sky. It is an entire team of people who will make these things fly, much the way we've transferred over from coal shoveling guys on trains to the very automated systems we have today. There still is a massive amount of human effort, human capital required to build them, develop them, maintain them, fly them, de-conflict them. And then, of course, when we get into the purpose of why they're flying in the first place, whether it's flying for logistics and transportation for FedEx, whether it's doing fires or wildlife management or research, there are all those additional pieces. Search and rescue, geological survey, the numbers go on infinitely almost.
Okay.
To the point of 100,000 jobs within, by 2025 after this. And those are all those interlocking, underlying jobs. This is not just two pilots getting a box, flying airplane 100 miles away. This is the flight crew, the flight crew that extends over a 24-hour flight, the maintenance crew, the dispatchers. Again, the software engineers, the maintainers, the fuelers, everyone tied to this project. That's where those numbers come from.
Okay, great.
It's very manpower-intensive, and we often lose that by calling them unmanned and drones.
Correct. Okay. I see that. And how many do you anticipate as far as the number of drones being developed now up until 2025?
Are you asking individual airplanes themselves or the systems? Because again, there's a whole system.
The airplanes, because I know the difference between the two. So, I mean, to have that many people working, therefore, there has to be something for them to work on. So with that number, how many do we anticipate, being that we have the number of billions of dollars as far as what can be generated because of the staff that it takes to operate them? So therefore, there has to be a staff assigned to a number of equipment, correct?
Yes, sir. And again, when we talked about, going back to Colonel Fleiss's comments, about the classes of aircraft. So everything ranging from your quadcopter that we're talking about picking up on the net right now, which may have one or two people involved in the daily operation, but there are still developers and manufacturers and toolmakers and dime makers and plastic casts and acrylic workers and all those people who've built and manufactured this, all the way up to the jumbo jet-sized concepts that we've seen that try to fly from Nova Scotia to Heathrow and run cargo intercontinentally. It really expands on those aircraft. But right now, we're building over 100,000 different, or 100,000 unmanned aircraft every year in the restricted environment we have now. It's over 100,000 when you combine all the sizes. You know, as Colonel Fleiss alluded to, that $3,000 a year, or 3,000 airplane a year contract for the Drone America Reno, you know, these are, that's just one of many different contracts. And this is a global industry at this point. So it's, when we look at that scale, it is very large.
It's a big number. And Colonel, Lieutenant Colonel, that's what you talk about as far as the small, medium, large, and the jumbo?
Exactly. And, you know, each one, you know, as, obviously, as the class gets larger, it's more of an assembly, it's more jobs, it's more of that. The joke that folks make about the Predator is that it's really the right flyer, if you want to look at it in terms of aviation. It's Orville and Wilbur's development at this point because it's the first one, and it's so fledgling. So, you know, I would tell you that, I think, what, because I see such vast different numbers. The thing that I think everyone understands is that there's nothing unmanned about unmanned aircraft. In other words, there's definitely a whole support network behind them. But at the same time, from a game-changing capability and safety and all the different things that you can now do with them, I think folks know, they just know that the demand is going to be somewhat insatiable at first. And, I mean, when you hear about oil exploration and geological survey, you think about just all the migratory patterns of animals that you can now, you know, more persistently follow. The Alaskan pipeline loses 10,000 barrels of oil a day via leakage, and you could just have a drone fly over top that and watch that pipeline. It just, who knows? The imagination is still happening. FedEx, they lose pilots every year in Alaska because of the harsh conditions in the winter and stuff like that. They could unmanned that operation, at least it would just be treasure to the company they would lose versus human life.
Yeah, just one more. And I get it now. Thank you for that clear explanation. But the flip side of that, do you also understand the element of surprise and the sense of security for the residents who feel as though, being that the technology is so grand, is so grand that it can most definitely impede their ability of privacy, going back to the conversation of the Fourth Amendment?
Yes, sir. I absolutely do. I have passion for it. I mean, just because you work in this industry doesn't mean that you don't have privacy. I mean, we're no different than you folks when you go home and want your privacy.
No, we don't have privacy.
Well, well.
We have media.
And in a lot of ways, in my role, in what I do, I don't either. But it doesn't mean that you're not passionate about it and that you're not trying to protect it and that you don't treasure it, just like everyone else. But we forget, don't we, sir, about some of the positive things we're talking about? We're talking about fires. I mean, I don't think anybody has a problem with privacy when their house is burning down or the forest fires coming towards it if we're using the technology to help.
Right. And I get the emotional side of the equation, but also, as policymakers, we have to balance both sides because you're an interest group, just as our constituents are an interest group. And so therefore, as policymakers, we have to balance both sides, not just one side of the coin. And so that's why I'm asking these questions, to get a level of understanding of what's going on here so that I can also get a level of understanding as to the concern of the constituents that are before us, you know, to basically try to figure out how to, you know, balance this conversation to where everyone is comfortable, if in fact, we can even get there. Because sometimes we can't, sometimes we can. And sometimes we land somewhere in the middle where everyone says, okay, we all take a haircut, you know, pardon the, but I get it. I get it. And I think what technology has done was basically created a double-edged sword for assault. Because technology can be great on one hand, but at the same time, it could hurt us in a very bad way. So thank you for your deliberation today.
And I appreciate it, Colonel. I do want to, I know as you go forward with this, or it goes forward not here and in other states, whatever the will is going to be. I think the current concern for everyone is how do you keep the technology, keep the technology from being kidnapped by the criminal element and the abuse beyond what the government has control over and set there? Because it's gone so far, it's sort of almost beyond our controls. And how do you protect the citizen going forward from that criminal element, taking that exact technology and taking that drone and using it for whatever invasion it's going to be? And I know you can't answer because you don't know what's out there. But I think where we are with this, at least from my vantage point, is knowing that there are going to be six sites. And again, the surround, we could be the surround state with every other state moving forward. But I, as we look to the future, whoever would have thought a pressure cooker would be used in that tragedy in Boston? And that that use, and you can see what technology is, is people interface, put down whole banking systems, whole technological connections, you have no control over that. So I think it's, any other comments anywhere? I mean, how do you protect us? How can anybody protect us from the criminal mind or the sick mind? It's not happy, but it's a fact. You can't guarantee that.
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I don't have any questions for these guys. All of my colleagues, all of you have asked great questions and brought up great points. I want to say this. This is a perfect combination. The governor recognizes that, has created this committee that Mr. Brown sits on. The universities are involved, the assets that this state has, Nellis, Creech, Hawthorne, Sted, Fallon, I mean, goodness sakes. Colonel, I'm going to agree with you. We need to be number one in this state in something other than gaming and tourism and entertainment capital of the world. And I think that opportunity exists. And I'm a full supporter of the Fourth Amendment and my privacy. But I'm going to tell you, Uncle Sam wants to know where I am? He can't. He doesn't need a drone to find me, whether I'm a city councilman or not. And I firmly believe that. But I also think of the economic advantages, the job creation, the companies, the secondary businesses that are going to benefit from this technology. You guys still have a task ahead of you. If we approve this resolution for support, you still have some work to do to make this a reality in this state. I recall my years of service and working at the Nevada Test Site. We were number one in nuclear testing in the world. And for other purposes other than blowing people up for nuclear sciences. And we lost that. And it hurt our economy, and it hurt jobs. And so, I mean, this is a perfect replacement. So I'm in full support. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to, if you, just one minute, please. Because we heard from each of you briefly, and I think we've covered everything, and Madam, if you may, just for one sec, because you did all speak to it, and I think we've covered in our dialogue up here, and certainly the Colonel Enful group has heard everything. I am going to ask if there's anything new or different, and I'm going to allow you at this point, and have you chatted among yourselves to make sure that you are not repeating? Because once you repeat, I'm not going to allow anybody else to speak. So I will allow you to address, and please do keep it brief. But I promise you, anybody repeats anything, that's the end of the public dialogue here. So the nerves better be on you, you better feel that. Okay.
Madam Mayor and Honorable City Council.
Again, your name, too.
Tasha Heath.
Thank you.
Last year, Congress passed the Federal Aviation Modernization Act, allowing domestic drone use. It was reported that they want to have 30,000 drones in the U.S. skies by 2015. There are 30 states right now introducing Privacy Protection Acts citing the 10th Amendment Center's legislative tracking. They are concerned, too. We're not the only ones concerned. It's disingenuous to pretend that this will not be led to further national drone programs used to surveillance U.S. citizens. I ask you again, why are we passing this before we have rules and regulations in place?
Thank you very much. And keep in mind, we're giving you, you are going to get two minutes here, but that's it. And anything you repeat, go on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. I would like to address something that Councilwoman Coffin said about warrants. No warrants are needed for traffic cameras or for naked body scanners at the airport.
Sorry, your name, please.
I'm sorry. I'm Cindy Lake. I'm the chairwoman of the Clark County Republican Party. We were told that that naked body scanners at the airport would not invade our privacy, but yet they do invade our privacy. Traffic cameras, they don't need a warrant because they're out in the public, so no warrant is necessary. I'm going to imagine that when we have 30,000 drones flying over our skies, our homes, that we don't.
They're going to come, and they're going to either, they're going to come from surrounding states.
Are they going to come into our airspace? And just one more question, have you all read the FAA directive? Because we don't want to pass a resolution and then find out what's in the directive. So I would caution that we read the directive before we make a decision here. We don't know so many things. And why do we need unmanned drones anyway?
You can't control the whole country.
Fire is a benign issue that we're talking about, but drones are used to kill innocent people in other countries. And our president has said that this is becoming a war zone. So please use caution, and please consider us. We're always told it's about jobs. This is not about jobs. This is about our rights. Please be the heroes of the Constitution that you took oath to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Brett Pajunas on the Libertarian National Committee. First off, Lieutenant Colonel Fleiss, thank you for your service. You fly the airplanes that I jumped out of in the Army. Surveillance is my biggest concern, and one of the things that you were asked is, will this be part of this program? And you said no. But in the resolution, in page 1, line 20, it does say that remotely piloted aircraft, cyber space intelligence, surveillance and reconnaissance mission areas will be high-priority areas of defense and national budget. My concern is this, whether it's part of your program or not, there's this little act called the Patriot Act, which can just tap right into it, and they'll love to use this as another tool chest. Now, I understand, it is a very, very tough economy right now. I get that. So when presented with the opportunities of more jobs or no jobs, it's very hard not to say no to these new jobs. My question is, what will you guys sell your liberties for? Thank you.
I would say the resolution has been miswritten because it's all about militarization of local law enforcement. I'm Michael Turley. Lived here in the city of Las Vegas for over eight years now. Mr. Daniels would have us believe that testing is tailored for FAA aerial space regulation to legally allow deployment of unmanned aerial vehicles in domestic settings. He would have us believe that there is no connection to testing drones in Nevada with Military Department of Defense and Homeland Security. The resolution itself contradicts this. At a speaking engagement in 2012 on behalf of Integration Innovation, Mr. Daniels was a secret non-foreign speaker addressing drone operation training, not for public scrutiny. His entire resume has everything to do with the Department of Defense militarized application of drones. He neglects to present the militarized law enforcement applications of UAVs, which is his background. In 2007, the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department applied for surveillance drones. The application was public. Objections were raised. The city attempted to get the announcement removed from public scrutiny. And does this sound innocent? Why would governmental body want to hide their action if there's no abuse intended? Furthermore, the promise of new jobs will never be actualized. Upon information and belief that drone applications will be integrated into Nevada by already existing trained personnel, which will make any new training of employees limited to law enforcement operators by officers already employed. Historically, governments' employment of technology has always led to the violation of individual freedom from government abuse of power. In brief, it is an attempt to get the city council's approval of the civilian community that they serve with full knowledge that once they give their approval, there is no way to undo that approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the second opportunity. My name is Jim Haber. And since they said that the FAA test area is not about the ISR, as he said, the surveillance aspects of these drones, about the safe operation, I think it's important to know, at what point are those rules going to come up? And who is going to be crafting the privacy protections that he said they're not going to be doing? So are you not going to have armed drones? And then the small ones that can fly now without regulation up to 400 feet, under 25 pounds, line of sight, are those, are we going to get regulations about those since they are designing very small drones that aren't going to be in competition with a airplane? So the safety there isn't an issue. So when is that going to be addressed and by whom? And I think we should all have concerns when an industry is writing the regulations that is going to control it. So if ALSI, the Association of Unmanned Vehicle Systems International, if they're writing these rules, well, I think you all have seen where an industry writing the rules to govern itself is a big problem, and I think that would be a huge problem here. And the autonomous, there needs to be a level of autonomy in these systems for safety's sake if they lose connection to the human controller. But the push for increased autonomy beyond a certain point is not about that safety. And already, the industry is pushing autonomous systems in a way that should make everyone afraid. The drones are able to stay and collect a quantum leap more of data than manned aircraft could before. The systems, the technology to track multiple vehicles in a large area is being developed in a way that, coupled with this drone technology, creates new challenges to civil liberties unseen before that we need to not push. My last point is that issues of security, national security, war and defense, locking people up should not be about the economic benefit. They should not be about making a buck. You know, if they say this is so good, let them do it for free. Let them give it to the government for our security's sake. If they're making a buck, let's all be concerned, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your participation. And Colonel, Mr. Brown, everyone that's here, I appreciate it. No more. No more. Thank you. I just, it is very difficult, and I think your points are really well heard and felt. Were we not so technologically advanced worldwide? And not at this stage, but they're here. They're here. And so, are we wise in being ready for all the good or the bad? Is there no better place than Ellis? We know other states in this country, are they as well prepared? We're in a sort of a no-choice situation, from my perspective here, because the fact is, they could be in the adjoining, and those six states around us could be the ones that are given license. I would rather have Ellis involved and know what's going on. And the promise is, and promises, you know, or promises, that we will have an opportunity as this proceeds, but you're dealing with something that's worldwide. And we do not want to be caught without being fully knowledgeable and prepared, as there are drones being furthered technologically with all the capabilities they have in other countries. And so, it is a very difficult thing, and I am extremely sensitive and believe in everything that you have said, except for one or two points that were brought up. But I really, I mean, you have hit on, as I spend nights not knowing if I'm asleep or awake, thinking about this, and believing in every issue that you've brought up. I mean, it's a very difficult thing to sit up here, knowing we have the constituency, and this is a big role. And to me, the economic benefit is wonderful in this time of no jobs. I don't look at it, and I do agree. I mean, there is, to me, life and safety and security and freedom, you can't put a dollar number on that. So, you know, I think as we move forward with this, and because I just personally feel this is a no-choice situation for us, we cannot allow every other state in our surroundings, or state that don't have the expertise, to be the ones that are selected. So I'm gonna turn, if there's nothing else from council, I think we've had enough input. One more comment from Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was just gonna speak on the motion, but if a motion is forthcoming, I'll speak now and then just vote. Again, I know people that were speaking had thought their remarks through, but hadn't listened to everything that I said, and I think particularly Cindy, and by the way, say hi to Craig and Craig O. I don't trust anybody. I don't trust any governmental institution. I believe in participating in an institution, and watching it, and monitoring it. And I've been part of government for many years, and I've always tried to keep an open ear for those who don't trust it, because I don't trust it myself. And I think that it's important to remember, again, the key points. We have elected officials who do control government, so you talk to them, and you quiz them, and you put them on the spot. You talk to the sheriff, you talk to the, again, the chiefs of the police, and the people who appoint chiefs of police in those areas. You make sure you're involved in the judicial elections, and you, and in the appointment process for federal judges. And you make sure that they all pledge to be extra vigilant, to not simply issue a warrant for something that could be frivolous, or something that's very, very borderline. They have to make people prove it. They've done that in the past. Some of them have been rollovers for law enforcement, and you must be careful there. And I think it's still within our power. I think the area integration is a critical issue here. And as we develop the body of law that I know will happen, as people raise complaints and they're adjudicated, we will get to something that we feel better about. Right now, for example, I mean, in Boston, they have a suspect. Why do they have a suspect? Because cameras on buildings. Cameras on buildings, monitoring people. I mean, even traffic cameras that have been talked about have been used in the search for the suspect. We're all worried about too much photography. We're all the most photographed society in the world. But there is the other side of it, and that is that there are evil people who do commit bad deeds, and the same resources, they're there for that reason, to identify that kind of person. That suspect is under surveillance now, and they're looking for more. It has not been arrested yet, to our knowledge. But I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman? Oh, Councilman Beers. Go ahead, please. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I share the concerns of both my fellow council members, and the members of the audience, and the proponents of this measure about the erosion of security and privacy and too much surveillance. But I've been an amateur radio operator licensed since I was 13 or 14 years old, and been a technology buff for a long, long time, and you can't put this stuff back, you can't put the genie back in the bottle. And as I weigh the choice before us here, opposing this resolution seems to me that it will decrease whatever ability we have to save, to save our constitutional rights from this technology. I don't know that supporting it will, but I know that not supporting it won't. And therefore, if the motion is to adopt this resolution, I will be in support. I think that the motion will help us achieve some semblance of restoration or preservation of our constitutional liberties. It's more likely to than it's more likely to not.
Thank you. I couldn't agree more. Councilman Beers, uh, wrong. Councilman...
Mayor, as I sat here and weighed the information that was shared from both sides, both interest groups, I'll just put it that way, the question came to me as far as something that you shared, Mayor, in your comments, and that's, the technology is already here, the train has left the station, and therefore, we have an opportunity to, in fact, be a part of the crafting and the drafting of the policy moving forward, so that we can, as policymakers, be in a position to protect the interests of our constituents. And in addition to that, having the military, the FAA, looking at opportunities to help craft the conversation for the policy, having the educational institutions involved, having the public and private also included, a collaborative effort, I think that, moving forward, this is the right step, although a very uneasy step, a very cautionary step. But having these, all these eyes, if you will, looking at the conversation and assessing the conversation, will be prudent moving forward as far as our ability to yet still have a seat at the table for the conversation versus closing the door, not having no access at all. And so, I too now agree that the train has left the station, and so therefore, we have to remain engaged and have a seat at this table to help craft that conversation for the protections of all of our privacy. And so, I don't want that door to close, because I want to make sure that we keep an open dialogue moving forward. So therefore, I will also be supporting the resolution moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman Barlow. I would encourage every single one of you who has voiced an opinion today to be very sure you stay fully engaged, because while we think of so many issues and dialogue with constituents in every ward, it is possible and probable that you will come up with something that's been overlooked. So this has to be with your support, involvement, and staying attuned to everything. And so, Councilman Anthony, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. Good discussion. Obviously, we have a better understanding of what this is all about compared to two weeks ago, when we had no clue what this was about. So with that, I am going to make a motion to pass a resolution that supports the Governor's Office of Economic Development and UNLV in their application process to become one of the six locations in order to test manned and unmanned airplanes, in order to safely integrate the two. Thank you.
And I would ask, as if this should pass, that the Governor be, have the opportunity to understand and reinforce, which I'm sure you've heard before, the concerns that were brought here today, which we all share very deeply, and I know you do, too, as residents of this city. So with that, there's a motion. Please vote. The motion carries. And thank you. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And thank you all for your participation. You're part of this team going forward. Don't escape. We need you. Thank you. We go back to, on to 36. Item 36, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding Appeal of a Work Card Denial for Martha Chavez, DB at La Selva. And this is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. And Ms. Duddleston, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The work card applicant is here with her interpreter today, and she can introduce herself. This employer has submitted the required affidavit of support of this candidate, and we would recommend a one-year site-specific work card with administrative review. And I'm sure the applicant would answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful. So, thank you very much. And this is in Councilman Barlow's ward. Any comments here from council, and any questions for the applicant? Councilman Barlow.
Thank you. Let me make sure I get her name right. Is it Silva? How do you pronounce the name?
Martha Chavez.
Martha Chavez. Martha Chavez. You understand why you're here today, Ms. Chavez?
Yes.
And looking in the backup, the information that was shared, as far as your track record and your history, you understand the significance and the impact of the criminal element that you exuded in the past? Okay. And moving forward, it is my hope that this job that you are now pursuing will be the turning point for you to remain on the positive track, so that you can honestly earn money, pay taxes, be a positive steward in the community, setting good examples for not only yourself, but your family members and friends. Do you understand that?
Yes, I understand, and I promise.
Okay. So what's going to happen right now is, I'm going to move to follow staff's recommendation for a one-year, site-specific work card, for you to work, to reestablish yourself, so that you can earn positive money, to take care of yourself and your family, and knowing that this is a second chance for you, and we're trusting that you're going to do what you say you're gonna do, your promise, keeping your promise, to do the right thing. Because should you not do that, then your work card will be revoked, and you will be out of work again. Do you understand?
I understand.
Okay. So for that, my motion, Mayor and Council, would be for the one-year, site-specific work card with the, is it administrative review, or will this come back before council can?
That is certainly up to the council. We can do it administratively and give you a report of that. We check regularly on these with Metro to see if there's been any concerns or arrests.
Okay. Then what I would like to see is an administrative review with, just a follow-up in briefings or something like that. But if, in fact, something should occur, then that will come back before council?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Councilman.
That will be my motion at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin had a comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. I did read the reports, and I want to get clarified from the applicant, something here to see if she quarrels with the police here. She was not a prostitute. But it's a public record, isn't it, that she was arrested? You know, I mean, people that's come for these things, they understand that there's a certain risk involved in discussing, and they're supposed to be able to say, yes, I did this, or I didn't do it.
Okay. I just, you know, it's just a sensitivity to the individual. It's not to say what you aren't saying is absolutely correct, but it is a confidential record to give the person the dignity to move forward, and since the motion was made, so if you bring up the past and what it was, you are saying it in a public venue.
Well, I...
Which I think is unfair.
I'd like to hear what Metro says about what the charge was, that she was found, was she adjudicated guilty of the charge?
She was arrested on April 30th of 2009 for two counts of pimping, and for selling a person for illicit use. And she pled guilty to selling a person for illicit use. And served three years.
Thank you.
There's a motion. Approve the one-year card with administrative review. My apologies. The motion passes. You're employed, or you're employable. Do you have a job?
Yes, the employer.
Okay. You're off to work. Good luck, and know you will have a year review, but I'm sure you'll do great. Good luck.
God bless you.
Thank you. Did you post? Okay. And I did see that, and say something. Got caught up. All right. Item number 37, please. It will be trailed to be heard in conjunction with 73 on the afternoon agenda. So we will now move on to item 39. R222013, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Regional Development Agency, RDA, in Connection with a Quick Start Program. QSP Agreement Between the RDA and Artemis Ham III Owner and Barola's NV LLC Tenant and QSP Participant Located at 508 Fremont Street to Be in Compliance With and in Furtherance of the Goals and Objectives of the RDA. Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. This item is related to this morning's RDA, item number 6, RA122013, and I have learned this morning it is also in connection with Agenda 9, item 40, correct, Ms. Arnt?
Yes.
So I will read that, too. R232013, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, in Connection with a Commercial Visual Improvement Program. CVIP Agreement Between the RDA and Artemis W Ham III Owner and Barola's NV LLC Tenant and CVIP Participant Located 508 Fremont Street to Be in Compliance With and in Furtherance of the Goals and Objectives of the RDA. This is in Councilman Coffin's ward 3. This item is related to the redevelopment agency. Item 7, RA, this morning, RA13-2013. Mr. Arnt.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Arnt, Economic and Urban Development. These items are respectively for item 39 for a quick start for Radio City Pizza, and item 40 for a visual improvement program agreement for Radio City Pizza. The businesses open for business. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comment from council? Councilman Coffin, yours?
Your Honor, I move for approval.
Okay. Thank you. There's a motion to approve item number 39. 39 first, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. This motion, please vote, and please post. That motion carries. Thank you very much. And Councilman, for number item 40?
Move for approval of item 40.
Thank you. This is a motion, please approve. Uh, please vote, don't approve. Please vote. And please post.
I am ordering you around. I'm kidding. I think I'm getting faint. It's 12:30 minutes. Why the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arnt. We'll move on to item number 41, which is R242013, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, in Connection with a Quick Start Program, QSP, Agreement Between the RDA and the Mission Spring Properties LLC Owner and Public Us LLC Tenant and QSP Participant Located at 1126 Fremont to Be in Compliance With and in Furtherance of the Goals and Objectives of the RDA.
of the RDA, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. This item is related to this morning's redevelopment agency, item eight, RA-14-2013. And moving right along to item number forty-two, because they are compatible, R-262013, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency, RDA, in Connection with a Commercial Visual Improvement Program, CVIP Agreement Between the RDA and the Mission Spring Properties LLC Owner and Public Us LLC Tenant and CVIP Participant Located 1126 Fremont to Be in Compliance With and in Furtherance of the Goals and Objectives of the RDA, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. This item is related to the redevelopment agency, item nine, RA-15-2013. Mr. Arnt.
Thank you, Mayor. Items forty-one and forty-two, respectively, are for quick start program funds and visual improvement program funds for a new restaurant by the name of Publicus at Eleventh and Fremont. We heard discussion this morning at the agency meeting. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, council? Hearing none. Please, Councilman Coffin.
I now move for approval of item forty-one.
There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. That motion carries. And item forty-two, Councilman?
Your Honor, I move for approval, item forty-one, forty-two, excuse me.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Okay. A motion carries. Councilman Coffin, Ross has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Arnt. Maybe this goes to Val Steed as well. Can we not, can we not vote on all of these items, like, in the morning session, when the applicants are actually here? Is there a reason we split them up like this? You know, the ones in the morning, the ones in the afternoons?
You're going to have to have both meetings open. In the past, that has been a logistical problem for the clerk, because it has, it's both bodies have to act independently, and...
Got it.
So, that's the reason we do it separately.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me ask that question.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Arnt.
One thing we could consider, Councilman, would be to put some of these resolutions on consent, resolution consent, in the morning, and then they would at least go the first, you know, potentially the first vote, all in one shot. So, we can take a look at that as we continue to improve our agenda process.
That'd be a good idea. Thank you, Vitsi.
Go ahead. Thank you if you'll do that. All right. We're on to item forty-three, Board and Commissions for Possible Action, Building and Safety Enterprise Advisory Fund Committee. James Chachas, term expiration five-two, two-oh-one-three, resigned. Does anyone have a recommendation?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Ross.
Director Knight is approaching the pass.
Good afternoon, or good morning, afternoon. Chris Knight, Director of Building and Safety. Mr. Chachas has served for several years on our enterprise fund, and over the past five years, he's been critical in helping us operate the budgetary issues of the enterprise fund, and we've gotten to the point that he felt that it was time for someone new representing the Southern Nevada Home Builders Association, which is the agency that he represents on that enterprise fund, take his place. And in return, Mr. Nat Hodgson, who is the current Executive Director of the Southern Nevada Home Builders, the home builders have recommended that he take Mr. Chachas's place. So, the recommendation to you is to accept Mr. Chachas's resignation and to appoint Mr. Nat Hodgson.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to make that motion.
Thank you, Councilman. There is a motion, please, to accept the resignation of Mr. Chachas and appoint Mr. Nat Hodgson as a place. So, please vote, and please post. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Knight. And we are moving on to item forty-four, Recommending Committee. Bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, bill number two-oh-one-three-one-three. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, if you don't mind, for this bill and for the new bills, we'll have our extra and Katrina read these.
Go, Ms. Samuel.
Bill number twenty-thirteen- thirteen, in ordinance to adopt an updating housing element of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. And we will move on to item... We will not. There it is. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to item number forty-five. This is bill number two-oh-one-three- seventeen. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Bill number twenty-thirteen- seventeen, in ordinance concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number six-oh-seven, authorizing the issuance of local improvement refunding bonds, Series twenty-thirteen, providing the form, terms, and conditions of the bonds and other details in connection therewith, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval. Move for approval.
Thank you. This motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Items, Agenda items forty-six and forty-eight, bills two-oh-one-three- fourteen and two-oh-one-three- sixteen, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills. What happened to forty-seven, though? It's items forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight. So, what do we do with that? Counsel, please.
You didn't vote on it. You were just informing the public that those are not going to be heard.
Okay.
So, it's fine to note that forty-seven should have been in there as well.
Okay. Forty-seven should have been included, so it would be items forty-six, forty-seven, and forty-eight, which would be two-oh-one-three-one-four, two-oh-one-three-one-five, and two-oh-one-three-one-six, which will be eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Now, we'll go on to new bills. Items forty-nine through fifty-three, bills number two-oh-one-three- eighteen through two-oh-one-three- twenty-two, will be heard at recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, April 30th, 2013. And please, would you read these new bills?
Bill number twenty-thirteen- eighteen, in ordinance concerning City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number fourteen-eighty-five, Out to Drive, Landscape Maintenance, FY-2014, Providing for the Payment of the Costs and Expenses of Maintaining Street Beautification Improvements, Assessing the Costs of Maintenance Against the Accessible Lots, Tracks, and Parcels of Land Benefited by Said Maintenance, Ratifying, Approving, and Confirming All Action Previously Taken, Prescribing Details in Connection Therewith. Bill number twenty-thirteen- nineteen, in ordinance concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number fifteen-sixteen, Fremont Street Maintenance District, FY-2014, Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth Street, Providing for the Payment of the Costs and Expenses of a Commercial Area Vitalization Project, Assessing the Costs of the Project Against the Accessible Lots, Tracks, and Parcels of Land Benefited by Said Improvements, Ratifying, Approving, and Confirming All Action Previously Taken, Prescribing Details in Connection Therewith. Bill number twenty-thirteen- twenty, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to authorize non-residential uses above ground floor level in mixed-use developments, Clarify the requirements for entryways to such uses, and provide for other related matters. Bill number twenty-thirteen- twenty-one, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to clarify the circumstances under which notice of public hearings regarding general plan amendment applications will be mailed to property owners and posted by means of signage and to provide for other related matters. And bill number twenty-thirteen- twenty-two, in ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 2.34 to make the cities present for the arts program optional rather than mandatory, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. Well done. And so, we will, excuse me, and I'm just here. These new bills will be assigned to Councilmembers Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin, and we'll move on to item number fifty-four. Our next item is that we will be going into a recess until, let's say, 1:30. If that works for everybody? Okay. We'll see you at 1:30. Thank you very much.
I said, can I stop by a minute? I can throw myself out if you want me to.
Well, we're currently here. But it can be a meeting in five minutes.
Oh, okay. But I can stay a minute without being thrown down, or what?
Why? Somebody looking for you?
I was going to throw myself out if he wanted me to. That guy right there.
Oh, he said, I can stay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.[1440.01]
an existing 5,775 square foot restaurant at 5900 West Charleston Suite 8. And Councilman Barlow has asked that be abated till May 15th, that's item number 71, so those three are my motion.
Thank you very much, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries, thank you very much. Move on to item number 56, public hearing. For possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 6244 Clarice Avenue, for fees in the amount of $2,642.50 general fund, and assess a maximum of $20,450 in daily and failed inspection civil penalties for a total of $23,092.50. Property owner Richard Ronald Barta, this is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward, and those pieces have been asked for you, Councilman Barlow, to handle, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, Code Enforcement Supervisor Vicki Ozuna. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 6244 Clarice Avenue, ZIP Code 89107. The major cross streets in this area are Torrey Pines and Washington. A code enforcement case was opened on November 20, 2012, and code enforcement issued a notice and order on December 18, 2012. The abatement was completed by contractor on March 13, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of all refuse waste from all areas, securing of the side yard gates, and painting of the boardings that were on the building. Staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $2,642.50, $20,450 of civil penalties, for a total of $23,092.50 as a lien against the property.
Thank you, this is a public hearing which is open, does anyone wish to speak on this item? The owner is not present, I gather?
No.
Or representative? Have you had contact with them?
The owner is deceased, we did have contact with his family members who failed to perform the abatement, and so the city went ahead and did it for him.
And do they live in Nevada?
Yes, they live here in Las Vegas.
Okay, and no one wishing to speak on this item, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion, Councilwoman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, move to follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote, please post. I'm sorry, I might have missed, what was the Zillow on that one?
The Zillow on that one is...
And the motion carries.
$61,185.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 57, public hearing for possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 1624 East Ogden Avenue, for fees in the amount of $2,521.35 general fund, and assess a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $22,021.35. Property owner Richard Ronald Barta, this is in Ward 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward, and those pieces have been asked for you, Councilman Barlow, to handle, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, Code Enforcement Supervisor Vicki Ozuna. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 1624 Clarice Avenue, ZIP Code 89107. The major cross streets in this area are Torrey Pines and Washington. A code enforcement case was opened on November 20, 2012, and code enforcement issued a notice and order on December 18, 2012. The abatement was completed by contractor on March 13, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of all refuse waste from all areas, securing of the side yard gates, and painting of the boardings that were on the building. Staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $2,642.50, $20,450 of civil penalties, for a total of $23,092.50 as a lien against the property.
Thank you, this is a public hearing which is open, does anyone wish to speak on this item? The owner is not present, I gather?
No.
Or representative? Have you had contact with them?
The owner is deceased, we did have contact with his family members who failed to perform the abatement, and so the city went ahead and did it for him.
And do they live in Nevada?
Yes, they live here in Las Vegas.
Okay, and no one wishing to speak on this item, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion, Councilwoman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, move to follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote, please post. I'm sorry, I might have missed, what was the Zillow on that one?
The Zillow on that one is...
And the motion carries.
$61,185.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 57, public hearing for possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 1624 East Ogden Avenue, for fees in the amount of $2,521.35 general fund, and assess a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $22,021.35. Property owner Kennedy Parrington and Alicia R. Anguano, and this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, this is a public hearing which I declare open, Mrs. Ozuna.
Vicki Ozuna, Code Enforcement Supervisor. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 1624 East Ogden Avenue, ZIP Code 89101. The major cross streets for this property are Bruce and Fremont Street. A code enforcement case was opened on November 16, 2011, code enforcement issued a notice and order on November 22, 2011. The abatement was completed by contractor on February 19, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of all high weeds, refuse waste, graffiti, and secured the building with boards over the doors and windows. The Zillow on the property is $55,982. Staff recommends the council approve the expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $2,521.35, and civil penalties of $19,500, for a total of $22,021.35 as a lien against the property.
And what about these people? Were they contacted, or are they deceased?
We did not have any contact with the property owner. Somebody did at one point board the building, and then it became open again, and we proceeded forward with our abatement.
And efforts were made, though, to reach them through the mail, through...
We posted on the property, we mailed certified and regular, and none of the mailings were signed for.
So what ultimately happens when you can't find someone, it just sits there until somebody inquires, is it for sale, or...
Well, the liens, or, I'm sorry, the taxes are in default, so eventually our lien will be put on to the tax roll, and it'll go up for auction, and the lien will get paid that way, once somebody purchases the property.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, please state your name.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, this is in my neighborhood. Was there a foreclosure on this?
The foreclosure on this, the property was not in foreclosure, or at least nobody has filed default on it.
I can tell you this, that that house is worth, at the very most, maybe $27,000. My house, that's what my house is worth, I mean, this is not any good or shape is mine, so.
Wow. Anyone else wishing to be heard? I'll close the public hearing, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the map, it looks like a duplex, so it's an income-earning property, maybe a little more there than meets the eye from the street. It is near Todd's house, I know that neighborhood, and it's getting close to Fremont there, and the 80 units that are right behind it, so it's hard to maintain a home in that. Nevertheless, they failed six out of eight inspections, and so we'll get their attention by following staff's recommendation. That would be my motion, Your Honor, to follow on item 57, staff recommendation on the hard costs and the daily civiles.
Thank you very much, there's a motion. Please vote, please post. Motion carries, we'll move on to agenda item 58, public hearing for possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 1209 Norman Avenue, for fees in the amount of $1,248.25 general fund, and assess a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $20,740.25. Property owner Kennedy Parrington and Alicia R. Anguano, and this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, this is a public hearing which I declare open, and Mrs. Ozuna.
Good afternoon, Vicki Ozuna, Code Enforcement Supervisor. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 1209 Norman Avenue, ZIP Code 89104. The major cross streets in this area are Charleston and Maryland Parkway. A code enforcement case was opened July 23, 2012, code enforcement issued a notice and order on December 18, 2012. The abatement was completed by contractor on March 13, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of all refuse waste from all areas, securing of the side yard gates, and painting of the boardings that were on the building. Staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $2,642.50, $20,450 of civil penalties, for a total of $23,092.50 as a lien against the property.
Thank you, this is a public hearing which is open, does anyone wish to speak on this item? The owner is not present, I gather?
No.
Or representative? Have you had contact with them?
The owner is deceased, we did have contact with his family members who failed to perform the abatement, and so the city went ahead and did it for him.
And do they live in Nevada?
Yes, they live here in Las Vegas.
Okay, and no one wishing to speak on this item, I'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion, Councilwoman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, move to follow staff's recommendation.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote, please post. I'm sorry, I might have missed, what was the Zillow on that one?
The Zillow on that one is...
And the motion carries.
$61,185.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 57, public hearing for possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 1624 East Ogden Avenue, for fees in the amount of $2,521.35 general fund, and assess a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $22,021.35. Property owner Kennedy Parrington and Alicia R. Anguano, and this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, this is a public hearing which I declare open, Mrs. Ozuna.
Vicki Ozuna, Code Enforcement Supervisor. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 1624 East Ogden Avenue, ZIP Code 89101. The major cross streets for this property are Bruce and Fremont Street. A code enforcement case was opened on November 16, 2011, code enforcement issued a notice and order on November 22, 2011. The abatement was completed by contractor on February 19, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of all high weeds, refuse waste, graffiti, and secured the building with boards over the doors and windows. The Zillow on the property is $55,982. Staff recommends the council approve the expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $2,521.35, and civil penalties of $19,500, for a total of $22,021.35 as a lien against the property.
And what about these people? Were they contacted, or are they deceased?
We did not have any contact with the property owner. Somebody did at one point board the building, and then it became open again, and we proceeded forward with our abatement.
And efforts were made, though, to reach them through the mail, through...
We posted on the property, we mailed certified and regular, and none of the mailings were signed for.
So what ultimately happens when you can't find someone, it just sits there until somebody inquires, is it for sale, or...
Well, the liens, or, I'm sorry, the taxes are in default, so eventually our lien will be put on to the tax roll, and it'll go up for auction, and the lien will get paid that way, once somebody purchases the property.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, please state your name.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, this is in my neighborhood. Was there a foreclosure on this?
The foreclosure on this, the property was not in foreclosure, or at least nobody has filed default on it.
I can tell you this, that that house is worth, at the very most, maybe $27,000. My house, that's what my house is worth, I mean, this is not any good or shape is mine, so.
Wow. Anyone else wishing to be heard? I'll close the public hearing, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the map, it looks like a duplex, so it's an income-earning property, maybe a little more there than meets the eye from the street. It is near Todd's house, I know that neighborhood, and it's getting close to Fremont there, and the 80 units that are right behind it, so it's hard to maintain a home in that. Nevertheless, they failed six out of eight inspections, and so we'll get their attention by following staff's recommendation. That would be my motion, Your Honor, to follow on item 57, staff recommendation on the hard costs and the daily civiles.
Thank you very much, there's a motion. Please vote, please post. Motion carries, we'll move on to agenda item 58, public hearing for possible action, to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 1209 Norman Avenue, for fees in the amount of $1,248.25 general fund, and assess a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties, for a total of $20,740.25. Property owner trustee Clark County Treasurer, care of Jack D. and Kathy E. Lino, this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, it is a public hearing which I declare open, and Mrs. Ozuna.
Good afternoon, Vicki Ozuna, Code Enforcement Supervisor. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 1209 Norman Avenue, ZIP Code 89104. The major cross streets in this area are Charleston and Maryland Parkway. A code enforcement case was opened July 23, 2012, code enforcement issued a notice and order on August 1, 2012, and the abatement was completed by contractor on January 22, 2013. The Zillow on this property is $53,748. The abatement consisted of removal of all refuse waste, high weeds, from all the areas, and securing a boarding of all open doors and windows. Staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report and assess the out-of-pocket costs of $1,240.25, and civil penalties of $19,500, for a total of $20,740.25 as a lien against the property.
Thank you, it is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment? Hearing none, I shall close that, and council, any council members? Nothing? Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, Your Honor. This house is an ISOR, right next to, well, was an ISOR, it's not quite so bad now that we had to pay to fix it. It's very close to Huntridge Park, an area in Old Huntridge, we're talking houses almost 70 years old, but the people are struggling to keep them up, and so we can't let this continue in that neighborhood, right next to that is Jessica, and these are areas where people are really trying to rehab and trying to do their best. We need to help them by being strict with people that do this, so therefore I recommend to the council that we follow staff recommendation on item 58.
Thank you very much, there's a motion, please vote, oops, excuse me. Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't know if it's a staff question, what do I conclude from seeing that the owner of this property is trustee Clark County Treasurer, care of, apparently, the residence?
When the, I'm sorry, when Clark County trustee treasurer is on the ownership, it just means that they're holding the property in, as a trustee, because the property's in default for taxes. Eventually, it's going to go up for tax sale.
Okay, would you please post that vote? That motion carries as well. So the one we questioned a couple back will end up with the Clark County Treasurer on it as well, just hasn't made it that far for taxes, in default. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number 60, public hearing for possible action, consider the report of expenses to cover costs for abatement of nuisance located in 4309 Carnation Lane, for fees in the amount of $2,157.00 general fund, assess a maximum of $19,650 in daily and failed inspection civil penalties, for a total of $21,807. Property owner trustee Clark County Treasurer, care of the Crosby Family Trust, Eleanor J. Crosby Treasurer, and this is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross's area, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to come forward on this item? Mrs. Ozuna? Yes.
You're on 60.
I'm on 60. So sorry, where did I jump? Well, how about pages sticking together? All right, so can we go to 60, since we went that far, and I'll go back to 59? Thank you, you are so alert, what a team here. Okay, we're at 60, what?
And it's, ah, no wonder, this is in his ward.
Okay.
Code enforcement...
This is Ward 4.
Number 60.
60 is incorrectly down, then, so correct your records, it's in Ward 4, Councilman Mayor pro 10. Anthony wants it back in his ward. Okay, so it's still an open for public hearing, but, Mrs. Ozuna?
Stacy was Mr. Correct.
Okay.
It is Ward 4?
I mean, it's Ward 4.
Okay, so there's this beautiful, sorry, would you go through this one, please, and we'll go back to 58. Keep everybody alert.
Code Enforcement Supervisor Vicki Ozuna, the item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expenses for nuisance abatement performed at 4309 Carnation Lane, ZIP Code 89108. The major cross streets are Craig and Rainbow. Code enforcement case was opened on November 13, 2012. Code enforcement issued a notice and order on December 3, 2012, and abatement was completed by contractor on March 13, 2013. The abatement consisted of removal of refuse waste from all the areas and some dead vegetation. The property owner, oh, sorry, staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report of out-of-pocket costs of $2,157, and failed inspection and civil penalties of $150, and assess daily civil penalties of $19,500, for a total of $21,807 as a lien against the property.
Thank you, this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to comment here, please come forward, state your name.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street, and through you, Mayor, I have a question for the attorney. A lien holder is allowed to protect his investment in a property, on anything, and so, since the county is a lien holder on that, can they go in and protect those trees, water those trees?
Dan Stell from the City Attorney's Office. Typically, no, the county's only interest is to collect the taxes, that's all they're doing, that's the only reason that they're the trustee, and they're the trustee because the statute requires them to be the trustee.
I prefer the better-looking one down there that we had this morning.
Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard? I will close the public hearing, Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, and now we'll go backwards, to item number 59, public hearing for possible action, to consider assessing a maximum of $19,500 in daily civil penalties for nuisance abatement located at 1816 Silver Birch Lane. Property owner Ronaldo Figueroa, and this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, this is a public hearing which I declare open, Mrs. Ozuna.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council, Code Enforcement Supervisor Vicki Ozuna. The item before you today is a public hearing to approve the report of expense for nuisance abatement performed at 1816 Silver Birch Lane, ZIP Code 89104. The major cross streets for this area are Fremont and St. Louis. A code enforcement case was opened on July 23, 2012. A code enforcement case was opened on July twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. The notice and order was issued on the property September nineteenth, two thousand and twelve, and the abatement was completed by contractor on February nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. The abatement consisted of removal of all refuse waste from all areas, and securing and boarding of the open doors and windows. The property owner paid out-of-pocket costs of fourteen hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, and the failed inspection civil penalties of nineteen hundred and fifty dollars were paid on February seventh, two thousand and thirteen. Staff recommends council approve the submitted expense report, and assess daily civil penalties of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars, as a lien against the property.
And the zillow?
And the zillow on this property is fifty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two.
And about that, if you can go back to the post-abatement, if you look in the pool, knowing we're getting into the warm weather, can we go back to take a look to make sure there's no mosquitoes and look in there?
Yes, I'll have staff do that.
Okay, count? Oh, I know, my goodness, you have me babbling down here, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor, the, this is a little different than the usual one, because in here, the abatement hard costs have already been picked up by the mortgage company, somehow there was a, an intervention, Vicky, is that how it happened?
Correct.
There was a transfer of ownership?
Correct.
That happened, in midstream, in our administrative process? So, while we see a hard cost of two-hundred-and-ninety-five, or actually fourteen-hundred, actually, the only hard cost we're showing here is two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars, so, so they paid more than that, I assume, somehow. I mean, to board up windows and to clean up a place, it's gonna cost a lot more than that.
Yes, they paid for the, the contractor abatement costs, the admin cost, the outstanding failed inspection fees, and the late fees, and they also paid for the outstanding civil penalties that were assessed during the inspection process. So, they haven't contacted us, actually, if you see from the first picture, the property is actually under renovation. It hasn't changed ownership yet, so, why they're out there working on it, you know, nobody contacted us, we posted the property, I expected maybe somebody would show up today and, and speak at the public hearing.
Essentially, what you're saying is, they already have paid what we might have assessed if we were doing what we typically do, in anticipation of possibly receiving that as an outcome of today's action?
Correct.
Which, I mean, I don't mind that, if, in fact, they kind of have watched us, and they know that the council frequently does take ten percent of the costs. Do you feel this property needs additional watching by us?
If they had contacted us and told us what was going on with the property, no, but since we are not even sure who's working on the property, yes.
Because I, I hate to let them off with that ten percent payment, and at the same time, not know for sure if this thing is really finished.
They could always come back and ask for a waiver.
Yes, I think, I think you're right, that doesn't mean that we want to assess a hundred percent on the, on the fees, so, yes, I'll follow the staff recommendation on this, but I'd like to hear from this mortgage company, and, and have them contact us, so they can make their case for why we should reduce that, and then they can produce updated photos and an updated list on it. Thank you very much, you worked hard on this one. So that's, my motion would be to go ahead and follow staff recommendation on item fifty-nine, Your Honor.
I'm not sure I closed public hearing, did anybody want to speak to this? It's just, because there are four or five in a row, I just wanted to make sure, so I will close public hearing, thank you, there's a motion, please vote.
Vicky, will you please ask?
And please post. What happened to Councilman Ross? Okay, motion carries with an affirmative from Councilman Ross on this. We're on to item number sixty-one, is that correct? Mayor Proten? Are we on sixty-one?
Sixty-one was abayed.
Sixty-one was abayed, so that concludes this portion, thank you very much, and now we are on to council, item sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five, which I will now read. Number sixty-two, EOT four-six-nine-nine-eight, extension of time on an approved variance, VAR fourteen-three-forty-five, to allow lot coverage of fifty-six percent, where fifty percent is the maximum allowed, in conjunction with a proposed mixed-use development. Number sixty-three, EOT forty-seven-zero-zero-zero, extension of time of an approved special use permit, SUP one-four-three-three-nine, for proposed mixed-use development. Number sixty-four, EOT seven, four-seven-zero-zero-one, extension of time of an approved site development plan review, SDR one-four-three-four-nine, for proposed mixed-use development, consisting of three-hundred-and-fifty residential condominium units, and eighteen thousand square feet of commercial floor area within one-fourteen-story and one-seventeen-story building, and a waiver of the residential adjacency requirements, and number sixty-five, EOT forty-seven-zero-zero-two, extension of time of an approved variance, VAR one-four-three-four-two, to allow no setback beyond the building setback line, where A, one, one-to-one setback to height ratios required along a street classified as collector, or larger, in conjunction with a proposed mixed-use development. The applicant owner is Charleston Towers LLC, for two-point-oh-five acres in the northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Tenth Street. All items are abeyance items, and are in C-one Limited Commercial Zone. Staff recommends denial on all items, these are in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin, and are not public hearings. Is the applicant present, or is someone representing them?
Mayor, George Garcia, Seventeen-Eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Creed One-Ten, pleasure to be before you, and just briefly, we're not seeking to continue the project as was, as, as you currently have depicted on the screen, as we were here before you last time, working with Councilman Coffin's office and staff, and basically scaling the project down, so that it'll be brought down to six stories, it'll be brought down to something that's more compatible, and it will still be mixed-use. We were at the planning commission meeting, we, after this was extended to this date, we went forward to the, submit all of our new plans, and went to the planning commission, so, we're going to be also scheduling a meeting with the neighbors that expressed interest at the planning commission meeting, we'll be sitting down with them, bringing them up to speed. Those items of the planning commission will be before you on May fifteenth, we're merely asking this item to be continued, basically, basically extended for six months, in case whatever happens between now and then, we have some time to bring this to fruition. What'll ultimately happen, these, this original project, our intention is, will go away and be replaced by the new project taking its place, and with, and with that, we'll answer any, happy to answer any questions, go on any detail you like.
Okay, thank you. In my notes here, there were comments, did I pass that by already?
Yes, but I was just going to wait until the next set of items, and introduce it at that time.
Okay, so I will move past this, I'm sorry, I wrote a big Mr. Flynn tag right on my notes, and somehow, it disappeared.
We can do that prior to item number sixty-six.
Okay, so, here we are, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor, in my former life, I was a protester myself on this project, because it was outsized for the neighborhoods, it was something that the neighborhoods, particularly on the other side of Charleston protested about, because it was way too big for that little neighborhood. Now, there's been some evolution in the neighborhood, there were some protests even to the most recent times, because people who showed up for a planning commission did not realize that this whole thing has been changed now, with, as George expressed, the cooperation of the owners of the land and Georgia's office have evolved us now to the point where we're gonna have something very much neighborly, neighborhood-sized, and hopefully set a standard, but they're, they aren't ready yet to show it to us, they will be within a month or two, but we, we thought we'd better let Flynn describe the situation, so that we really do need to give an abeyance, but it'll be a very short abeyance, and a short, short extension of time, I'm sorry. They'll keep a leash on the developer, it's not really a developer, it's a landowner who's hired somebody that can help him get it through the process. So, it, it has a good appeal to the planning commission, staff is required to put in denial here, because, you know, it is strategically against what we're doing right now, I think that's the reason. However, the planning commission did approve it unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, understanding that something new is coming. Don't Flynn guide me through a motion.
Okay, Mr. Fag, please.
Madam Mayor, through you, just respond to the councilman's question there, just to confirm, that the applicant has submitted a new application, which was heard by the planning commission last week, and was recommended for approval. Based on that, it is recommended that we make revisions to the condition number one on all four of these applications, items number sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five, that basically states, starting with item number sixty-two, this variant shall expire on October seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, unless another extension of time is approved by city council, essentially giving these applications a six-month window to get their new applications approved through city council, and so, Councilman, what I would recommend again, is that we amend condition number one for all four of these cases, to state that these applications shall be valid through October seventeenth of two thousand and thirteen.
Okay.
Is that acceptable?
Mayor, that's certainly acceptable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fag. Councilman?
I don't know if anybody has any questions, I'll make a motion if not.
Okay, any questions, any question here? Nothing?
All right, is this gentleman approaching the bar?
Correct, because there is no public hearing, so.
Correct, no public hearing, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor, then, one at a time, I will move for approval of item sixty-two, with the amendment to extend the extension of time only six months, that's condition number one.
Okay, there's a motion, please vote, this is item sixty-two, and please post. That carries, please, item sixty-three?
I move for approval of this item, extension of time for six months, that being an amendment to condition number one, to October seventeenth.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, item sixty-three carries, item sixty-four?
Your Honor, I move for approval of item sixty-four, with an amendment to condition number one, for an extension of time for six months to October seventeenth.
Thank you very much, motion, please vote, and please post. And on item number sixty-five?
Your Honor, I move for approval of item sixty-five, extension of time amended, condition number one, to, for a six-month, to October seventeenth.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries, thank you, we see you in October.
Mayor, Council, thank you, see you then.
Your Honor.
Please.
There was a gentleman who approached us, and he was not entitled to speak, because it was not that kind of a hearing, I will ask him if he has a protest or an objection to please come and see me, make an appointment at our office.
We didn't even know about these amendments, we're calling public union, so we'll be making a appointment.
Please, two-two-nine-four-six-two-three.
I expect my secretary, I've got it back in my office, which is one of the buildings we tried to go around, we were back to the last time, until the carpenter's vote is gone today.
We probably need him to come to the mic, Mayor, if we wanna.
Okay, and you want to come to the microphone, please, our council is suggesting you do that, and that, state your name, please.
I wasn't driving, it's funny, but, Ed Ormiley, nineteen-seventy-seven, or Seven-Eleven, South Ninth Street, for the record, my wife is Judge Miley, I'm sure half of you, I've seen that they're at Costco, or at kids soccer, handing out tournaments.
You over-married.
I'm sorry?
You over-married.
I married up. I think our former mayor would also agree with respect to him, and with respect to me as well, but.
Okay.
We didn't know this meeting was on today, I notified the carpenters' union of what was going on, and some other issues, they're the ones that contacted me and said, you said it's on for May fifteenth, it's on today, so I got ahold of Mr. Bochanis, tried to get some of the neighbors, we didn't know about any of this. We didn't know until we went to the last meeting, what was going on, so we just feel a little blindsided, I tried to set up meetings with, with the proposed developer, basically, they were busy, we couldn't do it, or whatever it is, then I find out this morning it's on today, it just kinda leaves a bad taste in your mouth, it's not what neighbors do. So, we'll be talking to the city council and stuff like that, probably privately, I'll be going through whoever, so I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, I didn't know it was on for public comment. It just seems kinda strange that things pop up on the agenda we don't know about, and have to find out from.
When did they post it? How long ago was, was the meeting posted, with the agenda?
Once an item is held in abeyance at city council, it's not remailed. We posted this agenda last Wednesday afternoon, so when it was in abeyance.
Once it's held in abeyance, it is not remailed, but it is posted, how many days in advance? Four business days.
Well, I think also, Your Honor, this was a subject of a planning commission meeting three weeks ago?
It was last week, and that was the first time I, we came, because we didn't, they didn't contact us for the planning commission, we came at the planning commission with our concerns, or whatever it is, that's when they said, talk to us, we'll make a meeting, we still haven't spoken.
So, even though, but you know what, even though it was in planning commission, you didn't realize it was gonna be today? Because they set it for.
We didn't know, no, they set it for May fifteenth, so I contacted the unions, because the unions, this last job was supposed to be an all-union job.
Well, let's, why don't, why don't we?
Understand.
Do this in private, so we can discuss.
No, I understand, Your Honor.
I think all the posting was done legally, that, that part.
Oh, I'm not saying it wasn't, we just didn't know about it until the union contacted me, it just seems a little fishy, and I'm not saying it's the, I'm not saying it's you guys' fault, I don't do this kinda law really.
Yeah, and I just wanted to real note, quickly note my presence today, too, and my name's George Bochanis, my property's on six-thirty-one South Ninth Street, I've been there for twenty-one years, and this proposed project is one-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the front door of my office, and had we been allowed to speak today on this extension, I would have had a lot of negative things to say about it, but since I'm not.
You'll make an appointment with Councilman Coffin?
And we will, and I thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number sixty-seven, wrong, sixty-six, EOT four-seven.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, if I can jump in with my announcement.
Oh, there was a second, I'm so sorry, thank you for speaking out.
Madam Mayor, there was an item that was originally scheduled to be heard on this agenda, it is DIR four-eight-zero-eight-six, which is a development agreement for the College of Southern Nevada, this item was heard by the planning commission on March the twelfth of two thousand and thirteen, it was announced at planning commission that we would hear it today, however, staff needs to do some additional review on this, and we're going to present it to you on the first meeting in May. If there's any members of the public who came today expecting to hear this item, I just want to make sure that they're aware that we will actually hear the development agreement for the College of Southern Nevada at the first city council meeting in May.
Which is May, May first.
May first.
Anyone here for the College of Southern Nevada? Don't see anyone, thank you very much, always jump right in, never be concerned, thank you. We will go on now to item number sixty-six, EOT four-seven-eight-two-nine, public hearing applicant, Play LV Gaming, owner, T-dash WHR LLC, for possible action, or request for an extension of time for a non-conforming tavern at eight-eight-nine Fremont Street, C-two, General Commercial, Zone, Ward Three, Councilman Coffin, staff recommends approval, this is a public hearing, which I declare open, is the applicant present? Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment in the public hearing, and is there a motion, Councilman Coffin?
Yes, Your Honor, move to follow staff recommendation on item sixty-six.
Thank you, on item sixty-six, please vote, and please post. That motion carries, we're on to item sixty-seven, ROC four-eight-three-four-four, this is public hearing, applicant Apollo Market, owner, Jankosa Inc., for possible action, or request for a review of condition of an approved special use permit, SUP one-three-eight-four-seven, to delete condition five, which states the sale of individual containers of any size of beer, wine, cooler, screw-cap wine is prohibited, at sixteen-hundred North Jones Boulevard, Limited Commercial, this is Ward Five, Councilman Barlow, the staff recommends approval, this is a public hearing, which I declare open, is the applicant or representative present?
Hello, my name is Laura Dreia, five-twenty South Fourth Street, here on behalf of Mr. Jankosa, who's both the owner and the applicant, without belaboring the staff report, we thank them for their approval, and I'm happy to discuss any questions or recommendations you have.
Thank you very much, it is a public hearing, anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none, seeing none, I will close public hearing, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
There's a motion, on item sixty-seven, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. All right, item sixty-eight, ROC four-eight-four-one-two. All right, item 68, ROC 48412, public hearing. Applicant Nada Hamika, owner Bonanza Lamb Business Park LLC, for possible action or request for review of condition of an approved special use permit, U0121-96, to delete condition three, which states, quote, "The hours of operation shall be restricted to 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily, and all deliveries shall be limited to 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. daily", and condition four, which states the sale of single-serving containers of beer and wine is prohibited. At 4550 East Bonanza Road, Suite A, C1 Limited Commercial, Zone 3, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. My name is Nada Hamika. I'm the owner of Vegas Winemart, 4550 East Bonanza.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public portion, and Councilman Coffin.
Your Honor, I move for approval, following staff recommendations on item 68. I think there was a change of hours. Was that decided at Planning Commission?
No, this item was not heard at Planning Commission. That item was suggested by staff. This particular property is located immediately adjacent to residential, and so, based on their proximity to single-family residential, rather than going with 24 hours, what staff have recommended was that the hours be expanded from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight. And so that would be an extension of what they're currently allowed to do. We would also place a restriction on deliveries, limiting deliveries between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. daily. And so, Councilman, those conditions were proposed by staff based on the specific relationship of this property relative to single-family residential, and all to discuss.
Thank you.
Did you agree to that?
I guess we need to hear what the applicant says about those things.
No.
Uh-huh. Okay. Councilman Coffin, they don't agree.
Well, let's make a...
And the gentleman with him. And sir, if you would announce yourself, please.
Yes, Basil Hamika, I'm a relative of hers. I'm trying to help her out. The businesses next doors, a lot of adjacent to it, they're open 24 hours, and so she believes that there's a, this would be, you know, crippling her for not being open 24 hours due to the, she has gaming in the business and it's open 24 hours, that'll affect her gaming income, too.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to come forward and speak on this? Councilman Coffin, please. I'll close the public hearing.
Your Honor, there were some protests filed. Generally speaking, it was from people who do not live in that neighborhood, and one looked like a protest from a competitor, Desert Express, which I don't quite understand. Is Desert Express a gas station, C-store?
Yeah.
Near you?
Yeah, across the street.
What are their hours of operation?
24 hours.
24, so you'd like to have an equal share?
Yes.
Except, you're closer to residential than they are.
If you would, the residential is behind us, but we've, we've always been there for years. We've never had any issues with the residents. We, it's a business, if you walk in there, you see a lot of groceries, so basically it'll help the residents from walking across the street to go get the things that they need overnight if they need anything. So that kind of helps them out in a way. And we haven't had any complaints from the residents, at least to us, we haven't had it.
Your Honor, I'm going to ask for a delay in this until we go back down there and take a look at the situation. I know our staff has driven, been there, but I don't think there's anything wrong with waiting a month before we make the decision on this. Would that be agreeable to you, staff? And you, Your Honor, would that be all right with you?
That would be fine.
Okay, Mr. Hamika, and we'll talk more about this personally.
Okay.
Because you and I have not talked about this.
All right.
So let's set a date certain, Councilman?
Well, the month of the way would be about May 15, if I'm not mistaken.
May 15, correct. Okay, and before you leave, Councilman Barlow has a question.
Through Councilman Coffin, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
The neighbor, where's the closest neighbor that's 24 hours?
On the drawing, can you see it on your monitor there?
It's Lammon Bonanza. That's right. The one that expresses across the street that's right on Lammon Bonanza.
Where is that on the monitor?
So they're on the major cross street?
Yes.
So, so the competitor across the street is open 24, and he doesn't want this door to be open 24. So I can understand the competitive nature there. I was just thinking, I want to check out the residential distances...
Yeah.
And talk to a couple of neighbors around there, because we didn't hear any written protests from neighbors, but rather from people who may be property owners who live far west in the, west of town, so I'm inclined to support it, but I'd rather have another month to take another look at it.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, thank you.
So, May 15th.
Thanks.
Correct? Okay. Thank you. We will move on to i, yes. Oh, I'm so sorry. Did you make a motion, please?
Sorry, Your Honor. I move we defer or obey item 68 until our May 15th council meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Item number 69, oops, the motion carries. Item number 69, ROC 48430, public hearing. Applicant Nala David, owner, Construction Group LLC, for possible action or request to review of condition of an approved special use permit, SUP 9863, to delete condition one, which states the hours of operation shall be restricted to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at 2187 North Decatur, Suite 130, C1 Limited Commercial. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
There's houses behind there.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Nala David, the owner of Kings Licker, which is located at 2187 North Decatur Boulevard, Suite 130.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, so your request is to go to 24 hours?
Correct, sir.
Okay, and 24 hours, I can't support the 24 hours for a number of reasons. One being that the residents that sit adjacent to your business have adamantly opposed this contacting my office and letting me know that that's not something that they want near their half-acre lots. That's one. However, what I did communicate to them was that I would be willing to go, for example, currently you are 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. I can do an 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. or midnight, but that would be the extent of my support for the request moving forward, so I'll be happy to allow you to select which one works best for you.
So from what I understand is that the neighbors are objecting, and there are like, not even within a quarter of a mile, there is another convenience store or liquor store that is open 24 hours, and a gas station on the other side that is also open 24 hours.
But there, but the way in which your building is positioned, you sit right at the back door of residential property in a residential street that has...
That's correct.
Been faced with a number of, of issues, and that's not something that they're willing to support. And I took a look at it. I went over there, I was in your store, purchased a soda in there the other day, just to take a look at the surroundings, and you run a very good store. But I do have to move in the direction of the constituents in that area by not supporting the 24-hour request.
That's fine, but would you please reconsider the hours, 8:00 a.m. to midnight at least, especially during the holidays and the weekends?
I would be happy...
This is a liquor store that where I generate most of my business in the evenings.
I would be happy to even go 7:00 a.m. to midnight.
Midnight will be fine.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Okay, then my motion would be 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m.?
8:00 a.m. is fine.
8:00 a.m. to midnight.
To midnight, please.
Okay?
Okay.
That would be my motion at this time, Mayor and Council.
Okay, and you agree to that?
I do.
Okay, so there's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. 8:00 a.m. to midnight.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to items number 70 and 71. 70, SUP 4, they've been obeyed, correct? So, boy, oh boy, where we are. Item number 72, SUP 48168, public hearing. Hello?
Yes, Mayor, I had a quick question. Any reason why 70 and 71 have been obeyed? Is there further something?
Yes, please, Councilman Barlow can explain.
Yes, Councilwoman Tarkanian and her staff requested that item to be obeyed, wanting you to make contact with their office.
Okay.
And as you can see, the councilwoman is not here, so her staff will be happy to meet with you to have a conversation as to their concerns as it relates to items 70 and 71. And do you have their number, and I can give it to you now?
No, if you may, please.
Okay, it's 229...
Uh-huh.
6405. And you can speak to Kim or Robin. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, okay, thank you, Councilman. Now, agenda item 72, SUP 48168, public hearing. Applicant CAO Ranch Stores, owner DNW Inc., for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed 19,000-square-foot building and landscape material lumber yard use at 232 North Jones. C1 Limited Commercial, this is Zone 1, Councilwoman Tarkanian. Planning and staff recommend approval. It's a public hearing, which I declare open. And are you the owner or representative thereof?
Bill Bunker, representing CAO Ranch Ownership.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward? Did you say me?
Me.
Me, Councilman Ross.
Welcome to Las Vegas. It's about time.
Thank you very much.
Seen your stores in Utah, and real happy to see that.
Thank you.
And it's a great location. I think you guys will do very well. Nice, nice to see that, that empty building get filled up and with a great store. So welcome to Las Vegas.
Thank you.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing. Please state your name.
In addition to the...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, my name's Hodges, Anthony Hodges. In addition, I just wanted to say that I wish Ms. Titanium a speedy recovery.
Thank you very much.
And good luck to you, sir.
We'll make sure she has that.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. In the past, we had a problem with the signs out there. There was too many signs, and they were too close together. But this applicant, he's going to have to have some signs out there for that business. So I'm kind of interested on how the council is going to allow this man to advertise his business when we had that problem with that, with that sign out there, and we made him take one of them down.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard? I will close the public hearing portion. Councilman Barlow for Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Yes, I'm with Councilman Ross. I had an opportunity to go in your store, my kids and I, and look around, and it's a pretty cool store. They really liked the baby chicks. They didn't want to leave. And I'm really pleased to see that you've come in and backfilled this store because it sat dormant for a very long time, and McDonald's sat out on the pad closer to Jones, and unfortunately, it closed down over a period of time. And so it's a great amenity to the community, something that is much needed in this specific area. And in addition to that, as far as the signage, to answer Todd's question, the signage is there. I mean, he has a big pylon sign that basically sits over the freeway. What you're confusing this with is the billboards that were removed, which has nothing to do with this property. Those are the billboards from another applicant that sat adjacent to this parcel. So with that, the councilwoman supports this item for approval, subject to all conditions. And are you the owner of this store, sir?
I'm a part-owner, yes.
Okay, what is your name?
Bill Bunker.
Bill Bunker. Okay, we're pleased to meet you.
Thank you.
Okay, look forward to seeing you around the store if you're in there.
We hope so.
Very big Nevada family. Very big, strong Nevada family. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 73, and that is SUP 48177, public hearing. Applicant Hyatt Market, owner, the TD Jack Family LP, for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing 2,684-square-foot convenience store at 2558 South Valley View Boulevard, C1 Limited Commercial, Zone 1. Councilwoman Tarkanian's word note, the item will be heard in conjunction with morning session, item number 37. Both staff and planning recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present? Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Lucy Stewart, 3900 Meadows Lane.
Good afternoon, Amir Alkashionan, 255A South Valley View.
Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. At the Planning Commission, we had a real signage problem on that. I wouldn't know if that was corrected, because Trinity wanted to be held to 20%, which is the, which is the rule there. And Commissioner Quinn wanted striping there for the, for the, for the parking, and I wondered if that was taken care of. And the other thing with me, there were some pictures that we had on this, and I was wondering if there couldn't be a planner or something out there just to cut out the, you know, it just, I don't know, to dress the place up a little bit. That's, that was my concern.
Thank you. Flynn, are comments back on this and what happened with planning, the suggestions? Any changes?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd be happy to respond to that. At the Planning Commission, it was noted that there was excessive signage in the windows of the business. We do have a condition of approval, which does require them to be in compliance with the sign requirements. We'll send a member of the team out in 30 days to make sure that they're in conformance with that requirement. As was also indicated, there was a concern about the striping of the parking lot and conformance to meeting the minimum standards for handicap parking. We also added a condition at Planning Commission which addresses that, and so we'll also review that for conformance in 30 days as well.
So does that hold up the approval on this item?
No, it does not. Those are attached as conditions of approval, so if council were to approve this today, they would be required to do both of those things as a condition of the approval.
And do you agree with that?
We agree, and they've actually been met.
Oh, good. Love that. Okay, Councilman, anyone else wishing to be heard? I'll close the public hearing. Please, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, I would like to move for approval, subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Oh, wait, no. Do we vote this separately then? Okay, so a companion item here. Agenda item number thirty-seven, discussion for possible action regarding a package liquor license, Hyatt Inc., DBA, Hyatt Market, two-five-five-eight South Valley View Boulevard, Ward one, councilwoman Tarkanian. Note, the item to be heard in this afternoon's session is in conjunction with item seventy-three, which we just heard, SUP four-eight-one-seven-seven. Mr. Fag, any comments here in too?
Madam Mayor, I just want to confirm that staff is recommending approval of the proposed license. The applicant has already been investigated, there were no areas of concern, so again, we are recommending approval of the license.
Great, thank you. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, move for approval subject to all staff's conditions.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote. And please post. Thank you, that carries also. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number seventy-four, SUP four-eight-one-seven-eight, public hearing, applicant, Market and Smokes, Inc., owner, TP One Thousand LLC, for possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed retail establishment with accessory packaged liquor off-sale use within an existing twenty-three-hundred forty square foot convenience store at one-thousand South Torrey Pines Drive, Suite A, C-one, limited commercial, zone, and this is in Ward one, councilwoman Tarkanian's. Both planning and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative here? Please introduce yourselves.
Yes, Lucy Stewart, thirty-nine hundred Meadows Lane.
We sound good, you, one-thousand South Torrey Pine.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Again, at the Planning Commission, we had a problem with the signage. We had some pictures on that, they had one-hundred percent signage on that door, and even wrapped around the sign. And this is my thing, you know, surely we can do better than this. I mean, they had, if they want this special permit and that, at least they can abide by the code. That's where I am on that, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Fag, do you want to make comment, please?
Actually, the applicant, the representative for the applicant, sent me photos this morning. The owner of the business has taken down the majority of the signs there that you see in the photos on the screen. We also have a condition of approval that requires them to be in compliance with the city's sign code, and so...
Thank you very much, and you are in agreement with that. Thank you, Councilman Barlow. Anyone else, public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you, and agreed to by you, I gather.
Yes, we agree, yes.
There's a motion, please vote. And please post. That motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventy-five, DIR four-eight-four-six-three, public hearing, applicant, City of Las Vegas, owner Shapiro Family Trust, et al., for possible action or request revocation of previously approved entitlements, site development plan review, SDR one-one-seven-oh-seven, special use permits, SUP six-oh-five-oh-four and SUP eight-oh-six-seven, and the variances, variance one-one-seven-one-two and variance one-one-seven-one-four, on one point eight-eight acres at two-two-two-eight and two-two-three-oh West Bonanza Road, and seven-oh-four, seven-oh-six, seven-oh-eight and seven-ten Dyke Lane, C-one, limited commercial, and this is in Ward five, Councilman Barlow's, and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item? So, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I requested that this item be brought back before the council for a number of reasons. When we request, well, when applicants come before us requesting an extension of time for their entitlements for projects, and the council put before the applicant a line item of things to do, such as making sure that the site in which they're looking to build the development, in order to maintain their entitlements, remain free and clear of all trash, glass debris, and blight. The applicant stood before this council and promised that they would address all of the issues, from graffiti to trash, glass dumping, and they totally did not do anything but accept the entitlements, the extension, that the council, Mayor and Council provided, and they neglected to move forward to address the blight at this specific property. So, I requested not only code enforcement, but fire to go out and address the issues. And the applicant, we attempted to make numerous contacts, we continued to get the phone hung up in our face, no feedback to my office whatsoever, and so I requested that this item come back to revoke the entitlements that was imposed before the council last year. So, at this time, my motion would be to move forward to follow the director's motion to eliminate the entitlements at this site as we continue to address the blight at this location as well. So, that would be my motion at this time, Mayor.
Okay, before I ask for the vote on it, Council, could you enlighten us as to all legalities here and notification processing?
Mayor, I was just going to ask if Mr. Fag could go through the specific violations that this particular property owner has been subject to.
Madam Mayor, in response to the question, there have been numerous violations of city codes at the site, which we do identify in your staff report. Please note that we also have all of the code enforcement cases included as the backup to this item in our files as part of the record. In terms of the violations of the code requirements, the list includes violations of Title nine-point-oh-four relative to public nuisances, violations of Title nine-point-oh-eight, subject to solid waste management or litter on the site, also Title nine-point-one-two, which is litter, Title sixteen-point-twenty, which relates to our building code and building code violations found there on the property, and then also Title nineteen-point-oh-eight relative to signage requirements for the property. And again, we do have a detail of each of the thirteen code enforcement cases that have been carried out on the property since this was originally approved back in two thousand six. In terms of the service of the applicant, the code requires that the applicant or the property owner be given ten days' notice prior to consideration of a revocation of entitlements. In accordance with the code requirements, we served the current property owner in person on March the twenty-eighth. We have an affidavit of service in the file, which will be made part of the record. We also sent a certified notice to the current property owner and have documentation from the post office on that notice, and that was delivered to the applicant on March the twenty-ninth. We also served the former property owner by sending, by certified mail, and so we've notified the previous property owner of this action as well. One of the other things I do need to point out is, in between the time that we began this process in terms of doing our staff report and recording the violations, the property changed hands. According to the county assessor's records, the actual new deed was recorded on January the twenty-ninth. The former owner was Bart Maybe, the current owner is the Shapiro Family Trust. It is the Shapiro Family Trust that we have notified, both in person and by certified mail, since they are the current owners of the property. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record, that we have followed the requirements of code in terms of the revocation of these entitlements.
Is there any fine that goes along with this?
No, Madam Mayor, there is not a fine that is currently allowed by code, other than the fines that are through the code enforcement process.
And then what is their process? Were they notified in the notification that this would take place today, and how they proceed further?
Exactly. In the letter that we served to them in person and both by certified mail, it does indicate the date and time of the hearing today, what is the proposed action, meaning that we are intending to consider the revocation of their entitlements for the property, and contact information as to what happens afterwards.
So, with this revocation, what does it mean? The property in New Earths, or sits, does it belong to the city? What happens here?
No, the property owner remains in control of the property. However, the right to build the mixed-use development, that was the subject of the entitlements, no longer
Exists.
Exists.
Okay.
And so that they would have to file new applications to redevelop the property.
Thank you very much, very clear. Thank you. And you did make that motion.
And Mayor, just for the record, they could apply for those at any time. There's no one-year requirement or anything like that. They can apply at any time.
Okay, thank you. And so it is a public hearing, yes, sir?
Councilman Barlow.
Name. Okay, that was Todd Farlow. Okay, there's a motion, please vote. And please post. That motion carries. And now on to item number seventy-six, I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you very much. We will move on to citizen participation. This is agenda item seventy-seven, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject involves the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. And please state your name.
My name is Anthony Hodges. I have three letters here that I would like for the council, all to have one. It's dated back to nineteen ninety-one, when Jan Jones first became the mayor. It's from Mr. Coffman, really. He made a statement that I felt that he needed to be corrected on. You see, things that I've done for Ward five and six and seven and eight and all that kind of stuff, it took place when I was living in the county. On a public comment and for citizen participation, a person can make suggestions. It went all the way to the legislature, and you might have been on the legislature. And what I'm saying, a public comment is for the public. You don't have to be a member of the city to speak on a public comment. If that's the case, Ward five and six, are you listening to me, sir? Y'all wouldn't even be sitting up there if I wasn't allowed to speak on the public comment. On the public comments, when I made the suggestion to create the new wards on the public comment, right here, and I got the answer back from the state, legislature. But you need to know something, Mr. Coffman, you got to be careful. You got to beat me up a lot, don't do that. So, I'm giving you all the facts right here, right here, and I want you all to have it, please.
Anthony, what are you talking about? Because I'm not
I'm talking about, Mr. Coffman said that, for you to say, you didn't even want me to come down to City Hall. You drive by in your car one day, say, okay, Anthony, you too, you can't come back no more. See, you're playing it cute right now. Mr. Coffman, give me a break, I'm not stupid.
When was that?
But give me a break, I got the facts right here.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Sir, you do know, you play your little game.
I wish I did.
Don't wave at me in your car, boy, in public, please, sir.
Okay, you know, you
Todd's my lawyer.
Talk to your lawyer.
Todd Farlow's my lawyer.
Okay, well, lawyer
I just obtained my counsel.
Say not to client, will you? Anyway, Mr. Coffman, this is for you, okay? I want you to have it. And I said, another thing, I'm here today to speak on our immigration situation. The Mexican people as a country next to the United States, like Canada is up, no, it's a country. First of all, these are next-door neighbors. So, when a Mexican comes to the United States, he's not an illegal alien, he's a neighbor. And he should have that working card, whatever, you know, to work a couple of years. First of all, a Mexican does not have to slip into the United States. I want that perfectly clear. They don't have to slip into the United States, they're a neighbor, just like Canada. What I'm trying to say, I speak on behalf of all the people. Some of the finest people in the world come from Mexico. Okay? So, Mr. Coffman, you got to step over the line a lot, if you don't like me, say so, but don't be beating up on me when you need to. Thank you very, or you're grinning now, but knock it off. Thank you, and I'm sorry about that.
Anyone else?
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. A few months ago, the council was sitting here giving all kinds of accolades to Bank of America and kissing their backsides. So, let's see what Bank of America, what they're up to now. This is public citizen news, this is Ralph Nader's magazine there. Now, Fannie Mae has been taken a lot of abuse by, because of the bad loans, and they don't have any money anymore. But let's find out why. The three-point-five-five billion dollar payment to Fannie Mae called for in the new settlement represents only zero-point-two-five percent of the total original value of the mortgage loans, which amounted to a staggering one-point-four trillion dollars. So, we really don't have to take a backseat or to give accolades to any of these banks. The other item I want to address is this. Sunday night on PBS, on Independent Lens, there was a segment about this war on drugs, and where it's gotten us and where it's going. And this kind of happens to go back to this item number thirty-eight. It was a two-hour program, and I hope everybody, you can call that up on your TV, or if you got this internet, anytime. The gist of the matter is, what happened was that our company, our country has gone, has traded our manufacturing jobs into jobs of incarceration. And if it gets, the way we're going, we're going to have one half of the country incarcerating and spying on the other half. And this goes back to that item number thirty-eight today. There's got, this has got to come to a stop. We can't afford it anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to be heard? We will close this portion of the agenda and move on to item number seventy-eight, which is council member recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Any member of city council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, we will start on the left, and are you up and leaving, Councilman Coffman? You have nothing, then, thank you, Councilman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to announce the Pirate Fest taking place at Lorenzi Park.
Ooh.
Arr. Pirates to invade Las Vegas at Lorenzi Park, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. The flyer reads, "I am mates, it seems the pirates will land in Las Vegas of all places."
Mayor, can I stop him, please?
Wait, wait, I mean
Uh-oh.
Through the mayor.
Wait, wait, he has the microphone. Will you allow? Oh, wow. All right, Councilman Ross.
Thank you.
Councilman Ross.
Through the mayor, to Councilman Barlow, you got to do it harder. I mean, you got to do it pirating, yeah. You get it, say it like you mean it.
All right, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, Pirate Fest, Pirates to Invade Las Vegas, April twenty-sixth through April twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. Arr. Arr, mates, it seems the pirates will land in Las Vegas of all places, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, at Lorenzi Park, just off US ninety-five and Rancho. You can experience the story, the Pirates of the Dry Lands. Pirate Fest Las Vegas will be a hands-on, family-oriented event sponsored by myself, Councilman Ricky Barlow, and the city of Las Vegas. We will feature music, entertainment, vendors, food, games, activities, and more for the entire family. Here, you won't just watch Pirates, you are the Pirate. If you like the Pirates of the Caribbean, you will love Pirate Fest Las Vegas. So, please, family, come on out and celebrate. It's going to be a joyous occasion, April twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth.
Hours, 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 and do they come in costume? And do you have a costume competition?
Please come in costume. It's going to be fun for the entire family. The gates open, it will be from eleven AM to seven PM, and all throughout the weekend. And for adults, you will have an opportunity to enjoy in the nighttime activities under Fremont Street Experience.
Wow.
So, you have a great time in the evening. So, please come out, eleven to seven daily, the twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. In addition to that, I host my monthly Coffee with the Councilmen. It will take place on, I believe, the first Thursday of May, which will be May second. I will be there from nine AM to ten AM, Coffee with the Councilmen. So, please, come on out, we always have a great time. And finally, I would like to once again wish my eldest son, Jalen, happy fifteenth birthday. I love you.
Very nice, very nice. Okay, Councilman, Mayor Protem, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to let everybody know about a great event coming up at the, at one of your local YMCA's. It's called Get a Jump on Summer. It's a Healthy Kids Day event. It is, it's a free event. It is, the all-wise are designed to get kids moving and learning and families living healthier. It's a kickoff for the summer. It's going to be at all four YMCA's, again, April twenty-seventh, from ten to noon. If you live in Ward four, it's at the Drangle Hills YMCA at Drangle and Gowan. There also is one in Councilman Ross's ward, and there's also one in Councilwoman Tarkanian's ward. So, it's a great way to start off the summer healthy, again, April twenty-seventh, twelve to noon, at your local YMCA, Get a Jump on Summer event. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. And now, Mayor, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. Great meeting today. I had an opportunity to reflect on the way our vocabularies change over time, you know, because in because in college, hurling scotch meant that you were going to have a really bad headache the next day, and now they're going to throw sheep out at the Tulley Springs Park Saturday. I myself have to be late to the sheep-throwing competition at Tulley Springs because we're having a joint Ward One and Two shredding event.
I'd rather throw sheep.
This Saturday, I know, but duty calls. This Saturday, from ten in the morning until noon at All American Sports Park at Buffalo and Oak, you can bring up to five boxes of stuff, and we will shred it for you at no charge. Great way to get rid of that stuff from my seven-years-ago's taxes, or whatever else you have laying around your house, as long as it's not a sheep. Take your sheep to Tulley Springs. Tomorrow, actually, one of the, all seriousness, one of the things I like to do the most is hike, and Red Rock is just right outside the City of Las Vegas limits. And tomorrow's an open house at the Visitor Center at Red Rock Canyon. All citizens are invited, from nine to three. There will be guides there to talk about certain hikes that might be appropriate for you and your family. Outfitters are very familiar with all the nooks and crannies of Red Rock, and it should be a pretty good time. Five-one-five, five-three-six-one, if you have any questions, but best is to just, if you have the time off tomorrow, show up at the Visitor Center at Red Rock Canyon between nine and three. It's really a very nice facility.
Fees waived?
I do not know if fees are waived, so bring five or ten bucks with you just in case, or call our office within thirty minutes, and we'll know whether or not fees will be waived. That number is, what is that number again? Two-two-nine-six-four-oh-five. That's all we have, Mayor, thank you very much.
Well, and of course, we have the wonderful Red Rock Search and Rescue. So it's wonderful, but please be careful as you go rock climbing or whatever you're doing. And so, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, very much. There's no shortage of things to do in our great city or around our great city, and you did very good, Councilman Barlow. Arrgh for the Pirate Fest, at the newly reconstructed Lorenzi Park, by the way. The fun stuff first, and then we'll get to the more serious stuff second, Mayor. On April nineteenth, Friday night, we will be having, starting our Movies in the Park series. We will be showing The Odd Life of Timothy Green, and for you men that are going, bring a tissue, because you will cry. There will be the world-famous Sliding Through Food Truck there, and we have a wonderful sponsor for this movie, Roseman University of Health Sciences is sponsoring this. And the Centennial Review got it in the paper wrong on Tuesday. They said Saturday night. So folks, if you're there Saturday night, have a great time, but the movie will actually be Friday night. So come on out, have a wonderful time. I also want to mention the Celtic Gathering again, one more time, this weekend, the twentieth and twenty-first at Tulley Springs, and Councilman Beers and I will be throwing sheep out there Saturday, oh, no, you're going to be shredding, sheep, 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 okay. Now, the more serious side of what we do at the end of our city council meetings and our continued relationship with Nevada Childseekers, we do have a missing child. Her name is Hyatt Ahmed. She's twelve years old, she's five-foot-six, hundred-and-thirty-seven pounds, brown eyes, brown hair. She is an African-American, she was, Hyatt was last seen in the area of Sierra Vista in Cambridge. Hyatt was also last seen wearing gray and black striped capri pants with a dark gray top, light gray sweater, and black shoes. If anyone has any information leading to the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Nevada Childseekers, seven-zero-two-four-five-eight-seven-zero-zero-nine, or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, seven-zero-two-eight-two-eight-three-one-one-one. Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Thank you. And in closing, again, I'd like to wish Councilwoman Tarkanian, behalf of her team here, continued speedy recovery. We look forward to having you back. I will be Friday morning at eight-thirty at Eldorado in its forty years, I had said incorrectly thirty years, celebration on Friday at Eldorado High School, so that's quite wonderful. And our next council meetings, May first, Wednesday, May first, and we look forward to seeing you all, and thank you very much for participating in our government today. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.